I think I saw it in there.
Uh, that I don't know about. We talked about draft from Mark I sent you last week.
No, when I sent you.
Alright, it looks like we are on air. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, January 21st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody else here has it.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to go into an executive session in a second, but before I do that, and while I have everyone at the beginning of the meeting, I do have an announcement from the Board of Assessors. The Board of Assessors is sponsoring a senior conference on February 3rd at the Senior Center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. as part of their outreach efforts. As you might be aware, this past year has seen a significant number of exemption changes and expansion of benefits available to our citizens. And as the numbers clearly indicate, we have an unprecedented opportunity to help a great number of the seniors. Little-known fact, did you know, more than nine million Americans likely qualify for property tax relief, but only eight percent apply for it. Eight point three percent of all Lunenburg residents live below the poverty line. Lunenburg has a senior population of 2,010 people. A total of 261 seniors of Lunenburg live below the poverty line. The benefits extend far beyond the poverty line. Next week, the BOA will provide the Select Board a brief outline of the conference on February 3rd, and if you have friends who are over 65, please urge them to watch, and if it's not for them, at least tell a friend. Alright. I move to enter into executive session and re-enter open session after exiting executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the Chair so declares.
Second.
Alright, this will be a roll call vote. Renee?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Michael Ray?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. We are now in executive session. Alright, let's just turn our microphones on. Alright, we are back in open session. Just gonna let people into the Zoom room.
Is that this thing we saw?
It's done, yeah.
Am I crazy? Are you guys hearing that?
Yeah, I hear some. To the booth, there's some feedback that we're hearing. Maybe we have too many microphones, I'm just like turning one off.
They're too close together, maybe.
Alright, we're gonna begin signing the public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
Yes. Um, I have a... Wow, that's loud in here. Um, I have a public comment to make. So, um, I want to just express that, um, between last week and this week, I've had the opportunity, uh, to meet with, um, our new upcoming, hopefully new town manager. And, you know, at our last meeting, I vocalized, uh, a couple of different concerns and to clarify, um, you know, in our process, you know, we have a steering committee, appropriately so. The, the goings-on in that steering committee are handled in executive session, so, uh, some of the information that, that, you know, we receive coming out of that is just the qualified candidates, but, um, a little more limited. But I want to just stress that, you know, at last week's meeting, I had, I vocalized some concerns. Uh, I had a wonderful conversation with Jen. Uh, she went over many of those concerns, and I just want to publicly express that, uh, they've been fully resolved. Uh, I think that, um, you know, there's, there's potential here in the future, um, perhaps to, um, if we evaluate the process we underwent, I recognize that an error on my part, uh, was, you know, the window of time, uh, between the interview and the selection, um, that in that time period, you know, I vocalized concerns that I acknowledge and accept, um, could have been resolved, uh, with more conversations, uh, in interim time without needing to publicly state them. Um, but, you know, I, again, meeting with Jen, I have no question about her competence, I have no question about her, uh, integrity, her ability to perform the job to the standard. Uh, I respect the decision of the board, and I just want to encourage the public to join me in welcoming Jen into our community, uh, to give her our full support. Uh, and, you know, it's in our best interest, everyone's best interest, to, uh, do all that we can to support, uh, the town manager of our community. I think Jen will thrive in that role. Uh, so again, I just want to, uh, state publicly that the concerns that I expressed last week, um, I, I no longer have them, and I, and again, I fully support the selection of Jen to be our next town manager. Thank you.
Alright, any other public comments from the board?
I do have one. I'll make it at the end, but I'll just do it now since we have a public comment. Um, am I in the microphone?
You should be.
An announcement from the Lunenburg Snow Riders I'd like to make on their behalf. Um, the Lunenburg Snow Riders was contacted by the Snowmobile Association of Mass, alerting us to an ongoing dire need of many victims of the North Carolina Hurricane Helene flood. There was a specific request for heavy winter clothing, sleeping bags, and bedding for families still living in tents and temporary housing. The Snow Riders reached out via our Snow Riders Facebook page and the local By Nothing pages, and had an enormous outpouring of donations from Lunenburg and Townsend. There was approximately 500 to 700 pounds of cold-weather clothing and bedding donated over the seven-day call-up. Donations included snowmobile jackets, insulated pants and boots, base layers, fleeces, huge piles of sweaters, gloves, hats, and many heavy comforters. Snow Riders made an initial drop-off of 30 bags on Monday, January 13th, and was dropping off the remainder on Friday, the 17th. These thoughtful donations will be in the hands of the North Carolina NGO agencies for local distribution by Monday evening, uh, the 20th. Starting Tuesday, many North Carolina moms, dads, and children will be clothed in the warmth and love donated by Lunenburg and Townsend families. So, just wanted to share that, you know, good little kudos from the community.
Any other public comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, um, I just want to note that as elected bodies of the executive, uh, body of this town, one of our most consequential responsibilities is the oversight of the town manager, or interim town manager in this case, um, and the selection of a new one, which doesn't happen often, but when it does, it's a very important job. Nothing is more important than the selection of who will be the employee leader of the town, even if the board is the policy leader of the town. That comes with a huge responsibility, and one of the things that I think that this board is responsible for is creating an environment that makes it attractive to qual- for qualified people to want to apply. Uh, and to make it a welcoming community, uh, not that we don't have our differences, of course we do, but that we are cautious in how we approach, uh, affairs, especially when it comes to people's reputation. I'm very glad that my colleague made the comment that he did. However, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the comments made directly impugn someone's reputation publicly, on TV, with baseless allegations, that somebody actually lied on their resume, or didn't have, or I don't know where they got the skills they got. This creates, in my mind, a, a less-than-optimum scenario that somebody would want to come and join the town, somebody that we desperately need, and in a way, not only is it corrosive in that way, it actually, and luckily didn't in this case, but it could have jeopardized all the candidates. Because if our candidate that was chosen by four members of the board had decided, "This ain't the place for me," and we would have had to go to somebody else, I think it might have tainted everybody. So, while the apology is accepted and, and recognized, it really is on us not to be in a position where we have to roll things back, and that we cautiously move forward, even with concerns we have. Concerns are one thing. Raiding people, as we all know, is uncomfortable, especially when you have to do it publicly. It's uncomfortable for the candidates, but it's still the job. But you can disagree. You could say, "I'm not voting because I don't believe this is the best candidate." But what we heard last week wasn't that. It was like specific reasons that cast a shadow that didn't need to be cast. So, we really need to do better. This is on top of how many times I've heard in the past six months how the town is a terrible employer. That doesn't help attract people of any level. You know, we need to do better. We need to put a positive. I'm not saying go around and tell people that, you know, Lunenburg's a utopia, but we certainly don't want it to be something that people are afraid to go to, when in all of my years being here, it has never been that, and I don't believe it is that now. There are always improvements we can make, but we, as a board, need to put a body forward, and need to put a front forward that attracts people, doesn't discourage people. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
I have one as well. Um, I too am glad, Mr. Jeffries, you apologized. You had a chance to speak with Jennifer and, um, resolve the, the questions you had. Um, I found the comments last week very upsetting, personally. Um, I thought it was inappropriate to question at that time. Um, my philosophy, my belief in, in hiring, um, and I feel like I've been doing it non-stop for the last 12 months at work, but I feel the hiring manager, which is the five of us in the case of a town manager hire, have a responsibility to research the candidate prior to the interview. Now, what does research mean? Doesn't mean looking up what they put on Facebook, but at a minimum, it means reading the material you're given. So, in, in our case, we were given their cover letter, uh, the resume and reference comments. Um, and the point of reviewing all that is to have questions. If anything is in doubt, if you want to research, to look into it, and you still don't have the right answer, you're not sure, or you just want to flat-out ask the candidate without researching, that's the point of the interview. That's the time to ask questions, um, and give the, the candidate a chance to address the concerns. Um, what upset me was not just asking the question, but assuming the answer, which was a negative, um, the most negative assumption you could make, that, that it was a lie. Um, I could think of, and I've encountered this as well, that a position you have six years ago, the titles change. I mean, it was a joke at my old, one of my old companies, that HR changed our titles every two years because it was job security for them, because they had to update everybody in the directory and all the systems, and everybody ordered new business cards. Um, or simply the position is, is, um, done away with, is just, you know, changed and no longer exists. So, there's, there's other, but I wouldn't even want to propose those as possible answers. I would want to give the candidate. I think it's only fair for the candidate to have an, the ability to answer those questions. Um, and as I was sitting last week, listening to the comments, some of the stories about, uh, possibly overstepping authority and things like that sounded familiar, because, because I did. I spent most of my day Sunday before the interview watching a lot of recordings, um, because they're out there. Select Board meetings, previous interviews. Why did I do that? Two reasons. One, I wanted to look for consistency in their answers, so a lot of the questions are the same from interview to interview. I want to know what they answered in the past. We hear the same thing. And also, do their answers align with their actions and behaviors in the job? Um, so that was, that was my motivation and my reason for, I don't have the luxury of looking up recordings when I'm hiring in, in my job. Um, so this is, this whole public interview thing is really, um, still kind of bizarre to me, but, um, so, I too, I was, I was worried
That is just the qualified candidates, but a little more limited. But I want to just stress that, you know, at last week's meeting, I had vocalized some concerns. I had a wonderful conversation with Jen. She went over many of those concerns and I just want to publicly express that they've been fully resolved. I think that, you know, there's potential here in the future. Perhaps to, if we evaluate the process we underwent, I recognize that an error on my part was, you know, the window of time between the interview and the selection. That in that time period, you know, I vocalized concerns that I acknowledge and accept could have been resolved with more conversations in interim time without needing to publicly state them. But, you know, I, again, meeting with Jen, I have no question about her competence. I have no question about her integrity, her ability to perform the job to the standard. I respect the decision of the board and I just want to encourage the public to join me in welcoming Jen into our community, to give her our full support. And, you know, it's in our best interest, everyone's best interest, to do all that we can to support the town manager of our community. I think Jen will thrive in that role. So again, I just want to state publicly that the concerns that I expressed last week, I no longer have them. And I, and again, I fully support the selection of Jen to be our next town manager. Thank you.
All right, any other public comments from the board?
I do have one, just make it at the end, but I'll just do it now since we have a public comment. Am I in the microphone?
You should be.
An announcement from the Lunenburg Snow Riders, I'd like to make on their behalf. The Lunenburg Snow Riders was contacted by the Snowmobile Association of Mass, alerting us to an ongoing dire need of many victims of the North Carolina Hurricane Helene flood. There was a specific request for heavy winter clothing, sleeping bags, and bedding for families still living in tents and temporary housing. The Snow Riders reached out via our Snow Riders Facebook page and the local By Nothing pages and had an enormous outpouring of donations from Lunenburg and Townsend. There was approximately 500 to 700 pounds of cold weather clothing and bedding donated over the seven-day call-up. Donations included snowmobile jackets, insulated pants and boots, base layers, fleeces, huge piles of sweaters, gloves, hats, and many heavy comforters. Snow Riders made an initial drop-off of 30 bags on Monday, January 13th, and was dropping off the remainder on Friday, the 17th. These thoughtful donations will be in the hands of the North Carolina NGO agencies for local distribution by Monday evening, the 20th. Starting Tuesday, many North Carolina moms, dads, and children will be clothed in the warmth and love donated by Lunenburg and Townsend families. So just wanted to share that, you know, good little kudos from the community.
Thanks. Any other public comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I just want to note that as elected bodies of the executive body of this town, one of our most consequential responsibilities is the oversight of the town manager or interim town manager in this case, and the selection of a new one, which doesn't happen often. But when it does, it's a very important job. Nothing is more important than the selection of who will be the employee leader of the town, even if the board is the policy leader of the town. That comes with a huge responsibility. And one of the things that I think that this board is responsible for is creating an environment that makes it attractive to, for qualified people to want to apply. And to make it a welcoming community, not that we don't have our differences, of course we do, but that we are cautious in how we approach affairs, especially when it comes to people's reputation. I'm very glad that my colleague made the comment that he did. However, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the comments made directly impugn someone's reputation publicly on TV with baseless allegations, that somebody actually lied on their resume or didn't have, or I don't know where they got the skills they got. This creates, in my mind, a less-than-optimum scenario that somebody would want to come and join the town, somebody that we desperately need. And in a way, not only is it corrosive in that way, it actually, and luckily didn't in this case, but it could have jeopardized all the candidates. Because if our candidate that was chosen by four members of the board had decided, "This ain't the place for me," and we would have had to go to somebody else, I think it might have tainted everybody. So while the apology is accepted and recognized, it really is on us not to be in a position where we have to roll things back and that we cautiously move forward, even with concerns we have. Concerns are one thing. Raiding people, as we all know, is uncomfortable, especially when you have to do it publicly. It's uncomfortable for the candidates, but it's still the job. But you can disagree. You could say, "I'm not voting because I don't believe this is the best candidate." But what we heard last week wasn't that. It was like specific reasons that cast a shadow that didn't need to be cast. So we really need to do better. This is on top of how many times I've heard in the past six months how the town is a terrible employer. That doesn't help attract people of any level. You know, we need to do better. We need to put a positive. I'm not saying go around and tell people that, you know, Lunenburg's a utopia, but we certainly don't want it to be something that people are afraid to go to when, in all of my years being here, it has never been that, and I don't believe it is that now. There are always improvements we can make, but we, as a board, need to put a body forward and need to put a front forward that attracts people, doesn't discourage people. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
I have one as well. I too am glad, Mr. Jeffries, you apologized, you had a chance to speak with Jennifer and resolve the questions you had. I found the comments last week very upsetting personally. I thought it was inappropriate to question at that time. My philosophy, my belief in hiring, and I feel like I've been doing it nonstop for the last 12 months at work, but I feel the hiring manager, which is the five of us in the case of a town manager hire, have a responsibility to research the candidate prior to the interview. Now, what does research mean? Doesn't mean looking up what they put on Facebook, but at a minimum, it means reading the material you're given. So in our case, we were given their cover letter, the resume, and reference comments. And the point of reviewing all that is to have questions. If anything is in doubt, if you want to research, to look into it, and you still don't have the right answer, you're not sure, or you just want to flat-out ask the candidate without researching, that's the point of the interview. That's the time to ask questions and give the candidate a chance to address the concerns. What upset me was not just asking the question, but assuming the answer, which was a negative, the most negative assumption you could make, that it was a lie. I could think of, and I've encountered this as well, that a position you have six years ago, the titles change. I mean, it was a joke at my old, one of my old companies, that HR changed our titles every two years because it was job security for them, because they had to update everybody in the directory and all the systems, and everybody ordered new business cards. Or simply the position is done away with, is just, you know, changed and no longer exists. So there's other, but I wouldn't even want to propose those as possible answers. I would want to give the candidate. I think it's only fair for the candidate to have the ability to answer those questions. And as I was sitting last week, listening to the comments, some of the stories about possibly overstepping authority and things like that sounded familiar because I did. I spent most of my day Sunday before the interview watching a lot of recordings because they're out there, select board meetings, previous interviews. Why did I do that? Two reasons. One, I wanted to look for consistency in their answers. So a lot of the questions are the same from interview to interview. I want to know what they answered in the past. We hear the same thing. And also, do their answers align with their actions and behaviors in the job? So that was, that was my motivation and my reason for, I don't have the luxury of looking up recordings when I'm hiring in my job. So this is, this whole public interview thing is really still kind of bizarre to me. But so I too, I was worried of what Ms. Warren Diamond's reaction would be because I, putting myself in her shoes, I would not feel good. So I was very happy to hear that she remains interested and excited about this opportunity and will be engaging in contract negotiations with us. And I'm glad you were able to speak with her and she's satisfied, you know, your questions. It would be nice, you know, if that had been done during the interview in a public forum. But nevertheless, I look forward to a successful outcome of these negotiations and moving on.
Thanks, Renee. And I didn't prepare a public comment on this, but since we're all talking about it, I truly share the sentiment that you both have expressed tonight. I think other than that one incident, it just seemed like we really took the responsibility of going through the interview process and considering the candidates very seriously. I think we all shared very good feedback and opinions on the candidate. So other than that, I think the process went very well and very professionally. All right. Any public comment from the public? Mr. Bowen.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Very good. John Bowen, 162 Highland Street. I just wanted to touch base on a recent communication that I made with the town manager, the town clerk, the town veteran representative, Ms. Durkey, as well as communications that I have with the Department of Vital Records, the Secretary of the Commonwealth Office of Public Records. And this is in regard to the access that I have not heard back yet from the town's position on, of the Cemetery Commission, Nancy Yasko, acquiring fraudulently password of some sort to be able to access the Raymaker Program, which is a database of vital records of which Kathy Herrick had no idea existed in its form, that there were social security numbers, personal telephone numbers, personal family information, as well as DD-214s and death certificates which highlight an individual's cause of death. I also spoke with some federal representatives as well in regard to this. And I still have no answer from the town, particularly when it comes to the law that says, in the event, by statute, okay, this is Chapter 46, Section 32, Mass. General Laws, it says, "In the event that the keeper of the record," that would be Carter Terranzini and the town clerk, "in the event that there is reasonable cause to believe through fraud this information has been procured by any person, they are to report that to the Department of Vital Records, who happens to be the register, and then the Vital Records Department has a requirement under state statute to be able to file, okay, a freeze of all access to that and an investigation be had, including referring it to local authorities." I sent the extensive letter and I have not heard back from that letter. And the local authorities would be, not the police department, the local authorities would be, obviously, you know, who would be responsible for these records? In that, I have received no response from the town, no response from the town clerk, no response from the town manager, interim town manager, okay, with regard to these violations, this fraud and access. This is private information, particularly the military records, which even the department, even Ms. Durkey said that nobody can acquire a DD-214 of a family member, and they're only limited to what they can, and they have to provide identification to be able to view that. Cemetery Commission's purpose for the access to the record, there is no purpose, there is no reason, she's an elected official, she's not protected by insurance like a person who would be a dispatcher for the police department, which see private, personal information the town has covered insurance-wise if that employee had violated that. And the only people that have ever had access to this program, from my understanding, have been the two gravediggers, the present one, who happens to be Todd Holman, and the one before that, that was Greg Bingham. And it has also been told to the Cemetery Commission by Heather Lemieux, okay, Ms. Yasko was told, "You do not have right to access." I have emails that say that. It's also on the public record that Ms. Lemieux has clearly stated that she is not allowed to have this access, but went ahead and got her self-access anyways. And I'd like to know the position of this select board on an investigation of their own executive office for which you have power over, okay, which would be the town clerk and the town manager in regard to the handling of this. Now, you can choose just to ignore this, but I think that 2,400 views on Facebook on the last Cemetery Commission meeting, if you go there, you'll be able to, on the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, you'll be able to see that, obviously, that this is a grave concern for the community. And I'm just asking what the steps are and what steps are going to be taken because a vote went through on November 21st, which obviously didn't go through because they violated the open meeting law. They reheard that on January 9th, and they asked for a license. They voted themselves to have a license. They voted themselves to have a license, even though they've already acquired access fraudulently. Now, that being said, I'd just like to know the direction about what this town plans to do with that fraudulent access because that information is protected information. In my letter, I highlighted a number of different laws and statutes, but I haven't heard anybody say, "Oh, let's go talk to the lawyer." Now, I mentioned this at the last meeting of the Cemetery Commission, and the lawyer, Adam Costa, was present. Lawyer Adam Costa, as a matter of fact, ran that meeting, if anybody watches it. It was 20 minutes, it's quite quick to look at, and you'll be able to see, okay, exactly how inept our Cemetery Commission is and how far that the individuals who are on that Cemetery Commission are willing to go to defy executive direction from an executive officer in this town. And I'd just like to know what the answer is to my letter and if anybody intends on answering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. All right. We're going to jump right into our annual climate survey policy workshop now. So thank you, Amanda, for putting together this draft. It looks great. I haven't had the time really to go through all of it yet. We'll do that now today as a group, but it looks incredibly thorough. Is there anything you want to say on it before we just jump right in?
Just that I wanted to have something for this discussion. I wish I had gotten it out to you guys sooner, but at least we have something to kind of go off of. It's based on my own notes. Obviously, any changes we want to make, work through as a group, but I thought it might be helpful to have something to work off of for tonight.
Yep. Unfortunately, Zoom is saying I'm restricted from sharing my screen, which is unfortunate. So it looks like I'm not going to be able to share it and get it up on the screen. All right.
Do you have your computer? Can you get on the Zoom?
I can try.
Yeah, normally it lets me share.
Yes, yeah, this is a concurrent.
This is a recurring.
This is a town computer.
It is, yeah.
Can we get somebody to look at this?
Absolutely.
This is the same laptop that I always use.
I wonder if it's one of the.
Well, the last time, you couldn't do it either.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's one of the Zoom.
And Renee shared.
Maybe.
Yeah.
It's what?
I was saying, I wonder if it's how the Zoom is set up in particular? Because we don't always have this problem, right?
Well, the fact that the host can't share the screen and a guest can.
Yeah.
You know, some of them are designed to, as opposed to I couldn't share, but I could.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, something's wrong there.
Oh, okay. All right, I see, Renee. Let me.
Okay, you're going to have to tell me what to share, though.
I know. It's the, in the drive, if you go to the drive and open.
Oh, let me turn my mic off, too.
Yeah. And then go to Town of Lunenburg Annual Climate Survey Policy Draft.
Yeah, it's the last document alphabetically in the drive.
Don't want to join with audio. Sorry, I wasn't listening to anything that you were saying because I was trying to mute the microphone.
That's okay, I feel like I'm at home.
Okay. The last one?
What? Town of Lunenburg Annual Climate Survey Policy Draft.
Okay, all right.
And you can delete my initials off the top. Share.
Is it just me, or is this room like six degrees?
It's freezing cold.
I'm fine.
I had like thermals on and winter socks.
Renee, is it letting you share?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, yeah, look at that. All right. All right. Thank you, Renee. It looks like you're just going to have to capture the edits as we make them, since you're sharing a screen. But yeah, let's just.
Wait, I'm typing, too. I didn't sign up for all of this.
Too late.
You're eligible for a bonus in your evaluation.
Yeah.
That's recorded.
Double your salary.
Of zero.
Zero times 10,000.
Right. All right, so let's just jump right in. So first is the purpose statement. "The purpose of this policy is to establish a structured and consistent approach to conducting the annual climate survey, to gather employee feedback on job satisfaction, workplace environment, and communication with management. The feedback collected will inform strategic improvements to recruitment, retention, and the overall work environment."
Mr. Chair, if I can make one suggestion.
Yeah.
So no one, at any point, looks at the title and by some chance thinks it's about climate change or the environment. Can we not call it a climate survey? Can we call it a workplace survey or a workplace, I mean, just so the climate isn't by itself, that it looks like, wait, why isn't the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, that's fair.
And your workplace.
Workplace climate.
Workplace climate.
It's towards engagement survey. So in the government world, it's called a climate survey, but in the civilian world, it's usually called engagement survey.
I've also heard it called Voice of the Employee, kind of, that kind of language.
Something that gives it that, that people, when they look at the title, know what it is.
So it's like staff engagement?
Yeah, that's fine.
Right. Or workplace, just adding workplace in front of it. I don't feel strongly either way. What do you guys think?
I think workplace, as we go along, might be appropriate because we talk about like the town as a whole, and I also address the select board, so maybe workplace is appropriate.
Workplace climate?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with that, too.
We could always adjust it after we go all the way through it because you guys haven't seen this yet.
By the way, does this auto-save? Anybody?
It should, yeah, because it's written in Google Docs.
Is that, I mean, it's a stupid question. I don't ever use Google Docs. Do you have something in a Google Drive and edit it? Is that?
Yeah, it automatically saves.
Is that what Google Docs is?
I don't know, I mean, I made it in Word and then not.
I always use.
Google Doc is, a Google Doc is a shared documents, I guess. You can, multiple people can edit it simultaneously.
Thank you.
But the formatting is sometimes really.
All right. Anything we want to change in that purpose statement? I think it's pretty good.
I think it's really good. I think that in the, where it says, the.
I'm too close to something here.
I'm microphone. Maybe your phone, put your phone on the other side. Thanks. I'm microphone number two over here. I'm just a little loud. The, where was it at? I just had it. Job satisfaction, workplace environment, communication with management. What comes to mind, and I don't know the phraseology here, but like career progression, I think it's staff development. I think that that's a critical thing here, so maybe it fits into one of these other categories, but I think something here is staff development as well, that we're trying to gauge.
Trying to think.
So that's in your purpose statement?
Yeah, I know, I just, I know I addressed that someplace in here, but yeah, I mean, I have no.
All right.
I just don't know realistically, you know, can we commit to, not that we don't want to develop our staff, but I don't know what that looks like yet.
Well, I think some of the questions are going to come out of this. You know, as I think of having done these in the past, one of the questions usually you're asked is like, "Do you feel supported by your manager?" Right? Do you feel as if, do you think that your manager is guiding you for career progression? Those kinds of, and that's kind of developmental-related questions. And I do think it's important that we train and develop our junior people to be in higher levels of responsibility. And I think we are trying to gauge that, not just, you know, job satisfaction and environment, but I think it's also that.
So where would you add that?
Another comma.
After retention and the overall work environment?
Yeah, somewhere after job satisfaction or workplace environment, you know, career support, career progression.
Development.
Staff development.
Yeah.
Something like that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with any of that. So to gather employee feedback on job satisfaction and workplace environment.
Staff development.
Staff development.
Yeah.
And communication with management.
Yep. I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Renee, for making those edits.
Yeah. All right, cool. Anything else on the purpose statement? I mean, it was very thorough, so. All right. Scope. "This policy applies to all Town of Lunenburg employees across all departments."
Question on this, would this be school or is it just be town? This is just town?
I'm pretty sure we just did town side when we did it in 2023, and I'm assuming that we would probably continue that, right?
I think only town employees are technically under review. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that.
Yes, the school department could employ such as, something comparable on the school side, but we can't, yeah.
How libraries, like the one employee that's not, not one, but it's one of the employees that's not hired by the town manager, they're hired by an elected board. And I think it should cover them.
They were covered.
Well, it did. Yep.
Yeah, I think they should be covered, so, okay.
So does all departments, is that clear enough? And you.
I think so. Yeah, I think it's just implied that it doesn't include the schools, so. All right. Responsibilities.
You could put excluding schools in parentheses if you wanted to.
I don't really care too much.
I might be overthinking things at this point.
Yeah, I think so.
I think a select board policy generally does not apply to schools.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Responsibilities. So we'll start with the select board first. "Establishes policies and strategic goals to support a productive and positive work environment. Reviews survey findings and collaborates with the town manager to guide policy improvements. And ensures oversight and accountability in the implementation of action plans informed by survey results." Anything we want to change, add, remove there?
No. I think no matter what we go through today, though, we are going to, for sure, have to sit on this because I think some things are going to come back.
For sure.
Afterwards.
So these are the responsibilities in response to the survey? Is that what your intent is? Or?
I just wanted to clearly define what everyone's roles would be within this process.
Because like the first one is just independent of any survey, right?
Right.
Yes. Mostly just kind of saying, you know, I was trying to clarify the roles, you know, like we're not day-to-day. We're policy.
Right.
We're trying to, you know, inform policies in the direction of the town, but we're not day-to-day. So I was trying to clarify who each, you know, what each body or person's role was within, you know, and how this would fit in, is what I was trying to do.
It's clear to me.
Yeah. I think it's accurate, right? So policies and strategic goals to support, reviews, survey findings, collaborates with town manager to guide policy improvements, right? And then ensures oversight and accountability in the implementation of action plans. I mean, yeah, it's accurate.
Nope, I think it's fine.
Yep. All right. So we'll move on to town manager and assistant town manager slash HR director. "Oversee the implementation and continuous improvement of the annual climate survey." And we'll probably just want to add workplace in front of there. "Ensure survey data informs policy and operational decisions. Provide regular reports to the select board on key findings and action plans."
Cool.
Go ahead.
Nope, nope.
All right. "Communicate the purpose and impact of the survey to employees and encourage participation through transparent engagement." All right. How about this section?
So the third bullet, "Provide regular reports to the select board on key findings and action plans." Can you just talk me through what you mean by this?
So I think it might make a little bit more sense as we go through the rest of it because I've got like a top line I've set out.
I'll come back.
But essentially, I just want to make sure that we're delineating what the expectations are. And also, I do know we might get some pushback from some employees on this because of how the last one rolled out. And I think we're doing a great job trying to improve this process, but I just want them to say like, okay, we are expecting this to be reported back and part of the process.
Okay. I'll come back to this one.
Okay. Anything else we want to touch on that one now?
This is a great way to start, Amanda. Good work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. "Department heads and supervisors. Encourage staff participation in the survey by fostering a culture of open communication. Serve as a liaison between staff and management by relaying submitted questions and concerns to the town manager and assistant town manager slash HR director. Help implement and communicate follow-up actions based on survey results." Sounds like we're all thinking here. Is there anything?
I have nothing to add to this.
Okay.
And you might have more to add, you know, after we go through it, things we want to tweak, but.
Renee, anything for this section?
Uh-uh.
Alright, Michael Ray?
Nope, I'll speak up.
Alright, employees. Employees are encouraged to participate in the survey to provide valuable insights that contribute to continuous improvement. Employees may submit proposed questions for consideration through their department heads by the established deadline. Participation is voluntary and all feedback will remain anonymous and confidential. Employees can expect transparency in how survey results are communicated and utilized to improve the workplace environment.
I'm just making a note on the second bullet, but I'll come back to it.
Well, we're out of the section, so that was.
I know, yeah.
But I think it will make more sense as we go through the timeline of what I'm talking about there, but I can kind of.
So in the first section, my only comment in the first section is that there seems to be an omission of the personnel committee. And I'm assuming they have some role in this somewhere. I don't know where that might be, certainly not the select board role, not department heads or employees, so either they have their own section or they're part of the section with the town manager and assistant town manager section, but they need to be noted here somewhere.
What were their, I mean, as personnel's only, what were their, what do you see their role as being?
Well, if we're talking about in this purpose, that job satisfaction, workplace environment, you know, they play a role. I mean, it's not, they don't make workplace rules, but they deal with benefits and salaries and steps, and so it has a direct impact on those salary admin personnel that are not covered by unions. So even though they don't deal with workplace policies, they have an impact.
To be honest with you, I just, that didn't factor in my mind. It should have. I don't know how we would, where or when they would come into play.
Would you see them developing the survey and, or more so just reviewing it and?
Not, I mean, no, I don't see them developing this. I mean, they should have been input on it, I guess, but I guess they're going to be part of the actions because if people say that, you know, the benefits in the town are not up to par for their, for the SAP or, you know, salaries are not consistent with union salaries and things like that, that's where that has to be addressed. Now, does that get addressed from the town manager and the HR director? Probably. So maybe they belong in that section somewhere?
But it sounds like what you're saying, if we had a personnel committee.
Well, we are going to have a personnel committee.
At some point again, we will have one again.
Right.
But it sounds like what you're describing is really like what we have listed as a select board responsibility here, right? Implementing.
Well, they don't, no, I mean, select board, I think, I think.
But it seems like it shares that sort of responsibility in reviewing, you know, the SAP and bringing forth articles to town meeting.
If anything, I would say it fits like the third bullet under town manager and assistant town manager, so provide regular reports, they don't provide reports, but act on key findings and action plans from the town manager and assistant town manager or HR director. So.
What if we have, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
A very similar bullet, but provide regular reports to the personnel committee, something like that for action for them.
For, yeah, exactly, for action plans and key findings under their purview, something like that, sure.
Because ultimately.
Their role doesn't have to be overstressed. I just don't want it to be eliminated.
No, no, I agree. And their charge, I don't know if this is an official charge, but it says it's the mission of the personnel committee to promote and maintain consistent and equitable standards in the administration of the town's personnel bylaw called the SAP in conjunction with the town manager and represent the interests of both taxpayers and town employees. So I think if we put another bullet underneath the town manager and assistant town manager that says provide regular reports to the personnel committee, what did you, how did you just raise the second half of that?
Provide regular reports to select board and personnel committee?
Yeah, on key findings and action plans under their purview.
Yeah, just adding to that bullet.
Perfect.
Yep.
Alright. Do you think it's necessary to have a section for the personnel committee?
No, it can be added to the end of the, that heading.
Okay.
So town manager, you know, comma, assistant town manager, HR director, comma, personnel.
Personnel committee. Okay.
You can see.
Yep.
Yep.
Not behind my head, I can't. I can.
You have to turn around.
I can see it by looking like this a lot easier.
You didn't grow eyes in the back?
I have.
No, not my mom. Only my mom, only moms have that.
I have a bag on my head.
Right, only moms have that ability.
Had the same thought.
And.
Okay.
And some teachers.
Renee, that, that last part, we were just going to add personnel committee to that header right there. So it would be town manager, assistant town manager, HR director, and personnel.
If you do that, though, doesn't that mean that they're going to oversee the implementation and improvement?
Oh, yeah, we'll probably bring it down a little bit.
Alright, so just leave it like that. That's fine.
I mean, the personnel committee already has their charge, and so, I mean, this kind of fumbles them with information.
If they're mentioned like that, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Good call.
So zip, zip, zip.
Alright, so we wrapped up the employee section. Michael Ray, you have a note that we're going to come back to at some point once we get to the timeline. Alright, so survey administration. So first is frequency. The town will conduct the survey annually with distribution occurring during the first quarter of the fiscal year. Their survey will address employee experiences from the previous fiscal year.
So the only thing I'll comment here, now I'm jumping ahead to the next section, is that the timeline of the next section is the last quarter of the fiscal year, not the first quarter of the next fiscal year.
So my thought process.
Well, you're fine. I'm just saying that they don't match. So if you're going to distribute the survey collection window, June 1st, that's not the beginning of the.
Oh, you're right. I changed, so I changed this timeline multiple times. So I was thinking, one, I didn't want things to happen in May because of annual town meeting.
Right.
But I didn't want to wait too long because if we're going to, as a board, if we're going to try to take action, it should be completed early in the fiscal year to capture the prior fiscal year, so.
Before, before your defense of that, I had no problem with the timeline. I just think that the comment and the frequency should reflect the timeline.
I actually do have a concern about the timeline. I know we're about to get into it. You know, having, when we get into the March through May period, really mid-March through mid-May, it is really hard, given that we have town. It's really hard to add another task to the plate. I mean, I know we were talking about, um... I can't see it. I was going to make a reference to executive session, but I think that the, my opinion is, is I like what you've put here. I would push this forward in the calendar year a little bit more because to me, when, by the time we sit down come April 1st, April 15th to work on the town manager evaluation, in my opinion, we should have these results in hand. So that's my opinion.
What if we do it, so the results would be maybe due end of calendar year?
So I think it would be the.
Because we're writing town manager reports in the April, May timeframe.
Correct. So, yeah, I would push this closer to the.
I tried to go backwards. So if we're talking about having the results, ultimately, we're looking at that August 15th date, right? If we're trying, that's like the completion before we're talking about an action plan? If so, if that's the end of the calendar year, December 31st, and then backing things up that way, does that make, does that kind of capturing what you're?
It does, or given your timeline, I mean, this can probably go out till January or even February, February 28th instead of July 31st. Because essentially, if it's February 28th, that's March 15th would be based on this timeline, March 15th is when everything's public. And then, you know, the implementation of the action plan would really kick off in June. There would probably be a longer period of time between the communication of results and the implementation of the action plan. And there may be a need for money or budget, but if we're further enough, if we're far enough out in advance, it could be put into a budget for action in the new fiscal year.
So the whole thing is a six-month process according to this, right?
Yeah, I mean, I was trying to not be unreasonable with expectations, so I didn't really know what to do in terms of timeline.
I mean, to, I guess it all depends on what makes the best use of the final results and how quickly that can be implemented. I mean, so I don't, you know.
Sorry, Tom, I don't mean to keep talking over you. My brain is going really fast this evening, but I think it also depends on whether we're utilizing a company to do this survey or whether it's being done internally because that's a bigger lift on the staff.
Yeah.
You know, whether we, obviously, if we have the funds to utilize a company, which I do kind of reference later in here, that's great, but we might not always. So I didn't want to put too much of a burden on, you know, the staff members that are actually implementing the survey and might have to create the, so I wanted to give enough room depending on how it goes.
Yeah. So regardless of how it gets implemented.
Yeah.
The question is, is there a better time of year or not to get the results of the survey that would give room to implement a plan within a certain period? For instance, and this is totally hypothetical, maybe part of the plan requires a town meeting article. So when is the best time to get the results? Is it to get it, you know, in the middle of the summer so that you're not going to do it until, you know, the possibly the special, or can you get them right before Thanksgiving so it'll be part of the annual? I mean, I'm just throwing out ideas here. I've never done any of these, so I don't know.
Carter has thoughts. Your mic, you have a thought on, Carter?
I would suggest to you that having the results on or about November 1st would fit into preparation of budget for your following fiscal year, would tie into any bylaw or SAP changes or other changes you need. And also, although it would not occur every year, might provide you some baseline information that you want to work with going into your collective bargaining.
Yeah.
Cycle. So if it was me, I would try to tie myself to November 1.
If it was my, my thinking was along those lines, too, that getting it, getting the results before the holidays gives a lot more planning time. And also, with this timeframe, if you just switched everything to that, you would dial March 1st, that means you would not start until June 1st to ask questions, and I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm fine with pushing it back to that timeline.
I concur. I think that's fair.
Alright, so we're going to try to adjust all these dates now?
Yeah.
So implementation of action plan.
I'm going backwards. So based on what Carter said, survey analysis and reporting to select board by November 1?
That's my suggestion.
Yeah, that's, no, but that's the line that you were.
That means everything here on Amanda's list would be three months, three months later.
So this is September?
Wait, are we trying to have implementation or communication of the results by November?
Two months, I'm sorry, not three months. Two months.
Yeah.
I don't think June is late enough. I think actually it would be July.
The communication of the results to the select board and the employees, I'm suggesting.
And I think what you have right now is implementation of action plan occurring 15 days after these results are committed. Maybe that's the start of the development of the action plan.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Is that what it looks like?
December 1st? I thought we said November.
No, she has it right.
November is.
November, November 1st.
Survey analysis and reporting to select board.
Oh, my apologies. I see, okay.
First date.
Sure.
But do we want the communication of the results to the employees to be November 1st? Or is it?
I don't think it makes that much of a difference at that point.
You have them two weeks apart.
Of course I want to know what's going on.
I do, too. It's very distracting.
I just, I just scaled you.
Yeah, no, no, I.
I don't, two weeks, I don't know.
I think so, because at that point, the results are being reported.
It's already done.
It's already done, exactly.
They, they, yeah.
And then, if we, I know we're kind of backwards planning this, but if we start from the front, does it take a month?
Yeah.
Department heads to pull together questions?
Well, not only that, I'm looking a lot of these now.
Yeah, we can adjust them at a good one.
Yeah, you were just wanting something for us to talk. Yeah, these are good talk.
So my thought process, even just talking about the, if we look, take our minds off the dates themselves, if we just look at the whole process to make sure that you guys all agree with what I'm saying here, I wanted the staff to be able to submit questions to their department heads and the department heads to be able to submit them to the town manager. I also further in this policy, I think we need to have core questions, which I sort of outlined, which obviously we need to go through for every single year that we can address and as a board, but then I think that there should be the ability for staff and managers and the town manager to add them additional ones, you know, depending on the things that are happening in town. That was my thought process on the staff and the department head involvement there.
I think if we're going to be doing a survey in August, my experience doing climate surveys is that the development of the questions takes like four to six weeks. Because typically, you know, if you are hiring a company, they're going to say, hey, what is it that you're testing? What do you, what do you really want to know more about? And then they're going to give you a bunch of sample questions to review. You know, there's never a great time because, I mean, whether it's hitting a town meeting or starting of a fiscal year, it's always something. But I think if we're targeting August, knowing that a lot of people are on vacation the last week of, of June, first week of July, that you kind of have like that two-week dead period there, I think you might be right with how you're proposing this in June. I would just adjust that May date. I don't know.
If you're also.
If staff know this is coming, do they really need a whole month?
We're looking in between June and August. The reason that there's a huge gap there is because on my plan, that was May for town meetings.
Right.
We need to make some adjustments there, too. I don't know that we need, you know, whatever that is. Can't bash my head for a month and a half for two steps due, so maybe we need to.
I mean, we're putting in a timeline for staff submissions, but really, staff submissions should be annual.
This is a deadline.
You should be able, right.
Yeah, this is a deadline.
This is a deadline.
Right.
So they can submit any time up until.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, they should be encouraged as they come up with them. There should be a place for them to give them all year. Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe we just need to digest the timeline a little bit. I know it's the first time we've all seen it.
Yeah.
But we're, we're closer to what we're thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, cool. So let's move on. It's after timeline. Survey design. The survey will be developed in collaboration with external consultants or internal resources as determined by the select board, considering financial feasibility and the need for impartiality. I'm just going to read there. I do have a. The survey will include a set of mandatory core questions addressing job satisfaction, workplace environment, and communication effectiveness. See attachment A. Additional questions may be proposed by employees through their department heads and submitted to the town manager and assistant town manager slash HR director for consideration. The final selection will be approved by the select board. Alright, any feedback on this one?
What's attachment A?
Okay, so I do.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Attachment A, I'm just saying, is the questions, okay?
Yeah, so I was just thinking as, as you're reading this out loud, would the, whether we use an external or internal be the board or should that be the town manager that decides?
I was going to say probably town manager and decide.
Well, HR director really is doing this.
Staff is really what I mean.
I mean.
You're deciding it because this is going to cost you $12,500 a year.
Really? If you hire a company.
That's how much it costs for?
I was going to ask. I know it's been a few years since we did this.
Well, I know a new company that's starting this year to do this.
Can we just use Survey Monkey?
So that's why I put it this way.
If, if I might, please.
No, please.
Turn your mic on, yeah.
Appreciate your insights.
We've already talked at some length about the job of being personnel or HR director, and procurement is too much for one person.
Yes.
And we're struggling with how to get all of that work done. Now, now granted, some of that was under the limelight of ARPA and a substantial amount of procurement that you would not do in the norm, but, but I think that's a real issue you need to think about. So if we assume that you need to use a consultant, you really probably should think in terms of 12, 5. Now, my suggestion to you is frankly one of frequency. Now, my suggestion to you is frankly one of frequency. If you do it on a biannual basis, you can put $6,500 in the budget and just keep it consistent. The other issue that I suggest you consider a biannual basis is that by the time, we're not a corporation. We can't turn it on a dime. So when you get your results in November, you may not be implement them until post the annual town meeting, and those changes will really have not hit home to most people, at which point you're asking them to do it all over again. Plus, you don't have a lot of churn in your organization. So you'll be asking the majority of people the same questions over and over and over again. So a two-year window, I think, has some budgetary sense if you're thinking about hiring a consultant. It has the ability for some of your changes to take effect before you ask folks again, and it has a little bit more timeline for, I, I, I don't mean the term churn to be derogatory, but turnover on your staff for a few more fresh faces to be in the mix. So with that.
Well, with that, I will, I will say, first of all, I totally support what you just said for several reasons. First of all, let's just address internally or externally. To me, if impartiality and anonymity of the employees is of critical importance, which it is, I don't care how you do it internally, it's gonna be hard for a certain sector of the employees, a certain fraction of the employees not to think that they're gonna know who did this, so I'm not gonna be honest. So I think you have to do it externally. Because of that, and because of your reasoning, I think it's very sound that, not for the budgetary reason, although that's helpful, but the fact that in order to implement something, if you're gonna ask them the next year, how well you did, and you haven't even implemented some of the things to make it different, all you're gonna do is get people maybe inadvertently more frustrated, because you're asking me, I'm like, I didn't see any difference. I didn't see any difference. So I, I agree with what Carter said.
I, I actually would be okay with three, every three years.
I.
Just to give more of a, for anything that is implemented, to get more of an accurate read of, was that on target? Is that having the effect we wanted? Because you do run the rest two of survey fatigue.
Yeah.
I think I like, I like the idea of two years because it sort of offsets when the different collective bargaining agreements might expire, since they don't all expire at the same time. Plus, I think the follow-through is important, at least right now, and I think we could address it personally. We could address it in the future for like, okay, we did this, and it feels like it turned around way, way too quickly. We could always address the policy. But I definitely agree with two years. I think three might be stretching it, and for a personal opinion.
I agree. That two years makes a lot of sense, but, you know, what, what I also think is important is that maybe this is something that we will add in, is that you have some kind of, so really what these surveys help do is they help catch toxic leaders. Toxic leader is generally gonna smile up and bark down. You know, something I shared with Heather was a story, and I'll share it with you guys, of, you know, a climate survey that I experienced at Fort Drum. Fort Drum is upstate New York, it's the 10th Mountain Division, which is a lot of soldiers that are there. And we did a climate survey, and it was one of the, on paper, it was the best company commander at Fort Drum. On paper, in terms of every metric in which the military uses to evaluate units, unit readiness, in terms of medical readiness, all that stuff, PT scores, weapons qualifications, just all the things that makes a unit, you know, deployable, ready for the combat zone. This guy was by far number one. Did a climate survey. Result of the climate survey was this guy got sentenced to prison. But what came out of the climate survey was, you know, we were integrating women into the military, guy was adamantly opposed to it. If you didn't score, military standard was 70% on a PT test. If you didn't score 90%, it was taking your weakens from you. If you weren't qualifying expert, you had to come out of pocket to pay for remedial training for yourself, certainly not the standard. Some really racist sexist things that were being said. They were caught in a climate survey. On paper, guy looks great. When you do a survey like this, you realize that this guy's toxic to the core. What I'm saying is something that I appreciated about the military was what triggered climate surveys? Was every 18 months or six months after the change of a new command. So something that may be helpful here is that if you have a, is that we may wanna create within this biannual basis some kind of catch within perhaps six months of new department heads to do some kind of survey, because toxicity, you can identify that right away. But if you wait two years, if you're the employee who's stuck underneath that toxic manager, two years is too long. And I think, yeah, two years is too long. So maybe that's not something we're gonna hit today, but I do think that there's gonna be value within the sections, that as this survey gets, gets pulled out, that there may be a small section that's given to a department when there's a six months after change of department head.
That makes sense to me with that. I mean, so this is where I say, what I usually say when we do policies. It's like, we need to get it off the ground because it's a new policy. It's a living policy, so we could start two years, and if it's too, too short, we could go to three years, and we can try to include that. I, I agree with you in that if somebody, if we're doing it every two years, and there's a department head that starts a week after the last one, you're gonna be two years, you're not gonna know this person's doing. So there should be a trigger that you could do a mini one.
Yeah.
Department specific, yeah.
And I think that makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, I really agree with that as well, so.
Do you want me to?
So can you write that up, please?
Just type it up real quick.
Take annual out, or is biannual every other year or twice a year?
It means both.
This is always, exactly. It's confusing.
I think, I think it's a point you should probably. Well, biannual, biannual is both.
It can be interpreted both ways.
Yes.
I guess I'm going by the HIBR budget, which is 15 years.
Well, and, yeah, and pay per years or biweekly, just every other week. I can just take annual out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just define the term, it doesn't have to be defined in the.
Where are you looking here?
Well, it's under frequency.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, it's probably under here.
It's on the page, it's right above the timeline.
Just say every two years.
And maybe we gotta be specific and say odd or evens, that way we know which, if we're in the two years.
Well, we did the last one in 2023, so if we wanna start this, I don't know if it will be too late to start it this year, but.
We could just say every other year. No later than every other year. Yeah. But anyway, we'll address it. As far as what Michael Ray said about triggering it, I think we'll have to have an exceptions area that, you know, in another section that says exceptions.
I'm just putting this here just so we know.
Yeah.
Of the previous.
So it won't be the previous fiscal year?
Yeah, I know. So they're filling it out in August. It's previous 12 months, I mean, right?
We could just.
Or previous, actually, two years, because this is happening every two years.
Right, right, since the last survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
So on survey design, we were gonna change it, is that gonna be the select board? That's what we just said, based on Carter's advice?
Yeah, I was gonna go back to that. I'm fine with that.
Biannual, not biennial.
Biennial?
Biennial is every two.
Right.
Sorry about that.
It's a common debate.
No, but, but biannual, I looked this up, means both, believe it or not, which is.
It gets confusing when you're scheduling meetings.
So for the first bullet point under survey design, do we wanna keep that to be determined by the select board?
I think that was what Carter's guidance was.
Carter's recommendation, right?
Well, you are the policymakers on it, right?
Yeah.
So.
This is your survey. I think you need to be the final arbiter
Right.
as to whether or not it is meeting the test of why you're doing it. No other group can do that.
Yes, I, I agree that we should, I mean, obviously, if we're doing our job, we're gonna do this all in conjunction with the HR director
Yeah.
Yeah.
and the town manager. But it should be our final decision.
So it's good for that bullet point. Was there anything else on these other two? So the second one is the survey will include a set of mandatory core questions addressing job satisfaction, workplace environment, and communication effectiveness.
Did we wanna add?
Yeah, what was it?
That was added at the beginning.
Staff development.
Staff development, yeah.
And then the third bullet point, additional questions may be proposed by employees through their department heads and submitted to the town manager and assistant town manager slash HR director for consideration. The final selection will be approved by the select board.
So that was specific to any additional questions we wanted to add to our core questions for each survey.
I'm okay with that.
Good.
Tom or Michael Ray?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, no, I was just, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're reading through the previous ones? Okay.
These do not match up with what we were, the summary we got.
Alright. Well, let's just continue on from now. Alright, distribution and collection. The survey will be distributed electronically via the town's internal communication channels. No paper copies will be provided. Responses will remain anonymous and confidential. The survey window will be open for a minimum of four weeks.
So my only comment is on bullet one, distributed electronically. I, I don't, I mean, we should leave that open. It should be distributed electronically in a means determined by, you know, the select board and, and, you know, outside vendor or whatever. I mean, you don't necessarily have to email it, you could just point people to a.
A link.
Usually it's a link.
Yeah.
Outside website.
So aside from that.
We just say distributed electronically.
Yeah, just distributed electronically.
Because if it's an, yeah, if it's an outside vendor, they have, and it's.
And I think you can delete that second sentence, the no paper copies will be provided.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I think we should keep that.
You think you should keep that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the survey will be distributed electronically, period, and then no paper copies will be provided.
Right.
The suggested changes.
Right.
People just take screenshots of that.
I just, I just didn't wanna have the requirement of, you know, people filling it out, and I feel like that eliminates some of the confidentiality.
Oh, the survey itself, not, I'm thinking of results.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The survey itself, whatever the collection method is, that is the single collection method.
Yeah. I was just gonna say that as well. Alright. Anything else for distribution and collection?
I don't know if this applies to anybody, but we have to be sensitive to ADA requirements. So if anybody has eyesight issues or anything, we have to be able to come up with a way for them to take the survey.
Well, hopefully the web application is five-way compliant that they send out.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, that's something we need to be sensitive.
That's something to ask the vendor.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Assuming we go that route.
Do we wanna add something if, you know, reasonable accommodations will be met for any accessibility needs?
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to add that in.
Yeah.
At the end of the sentence, what, distributed electronically?
I, I mean, that's okay. Or another sentence at the end of it. And then just saying reasonable accommodations will be made for.
Wait, do we need to add that, you think?
I, I mean, I would hope that companies that do this work would just do this automatically. I don't feel strongly that we need to add it.
I don't think it has to be documented, I just think you have to remember.
We have to do it.
Right.
We just have to make sure to check, you know?
It should be standard, I would think, for any company that does this.
Right. And if we ever really like have that need, we definitely.
It could, I mean, if we wanted to, say the survey will be distributed electronically, and will meet all ADA requirements.
Yeah, that's good.
Beautiful.
Okay. Anything else for that part? Alright, data analysis and reporting. The results will be analyzed by an independent third party or internal team as deemed appropriate. A summary of findings and recommended actions will be shared with the select board and employees, and key trends and actionable insights will be identified to address concerns and improve the work environment.
Is the first bullet would be decided by the select board, rather than as deemed appropriate?
Yes, it should be by the select.
Yep.
Since we're deciding how to administer the survey.
I think this part, you know, maybe we need to have a little bit more further discussions about what actually happens here, simply because of how the last one went. You know, you just referenced that last survey. Do we need to delineate what the employees will actually have access to? Is it just gonna be a summary that became a problem last year? Or is it, you know, what are, what is it that we're sharing? What information is being sent out? What do we see? What do they see? What is it? Do we need to talk about?
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, again, I think we should, I mean, I just looked through three different departments here. One of the questions was confidence that anything's gonna happen as a result of this survey.
It was one of the lowest ones.
Oh, it's 0%. Well, I think it was 0% on, I think it was two of them that I just saw at least. And they were correct. Since we're just now seeing this now, and this was two years ago.
Yeah.
You know, on, I'm sorry, to get, to get back to the question, I think the analysis, I think we should provide the full survey results. I mean, these things are hard to stomach the first time they come out, right? The first one is always gonna be a little negative. It's always gonna capture people's gut feelings. And you can ask 100 people, you know, you can put $1,000 in 100 people's hands, and, and some people are gonna say it was an awful experience. I mean, it's just gonna, it's just gonna be that way. But I think that the full results of climate surveys should be public. I think that, that, you know, the taxpayer has a right to know, they're paying for it. So I, I mean, I know that there's some analysis that needs to happen, but really, it's, it's the full. I'm opposed, there's gonna be a summary page no matter what. So when you have the third-party company do this, they give you that summary page of like, and basically, as we look through these PowerPoints that were created off of that, the first couple of pages essentially are the summaries. But it does go, the detail is question by question of how much, and I don't know if we need to give, you know, all that, but I do.
Ultimately, it's public record anyway, so we need to be careful about how the questions are addressed so that the answers aren't, in a way, that would identify employees.
Correct.
But I just wanted to make sure we're all the same.
So the numeric score is, I have no problem distributing to everybody.
Yeah.
It's when comments that we cannot.
Yeah.
Because comments, people can discern from people's writing styles, from people's vocabulary, from people's phrasing, and that's exactly what you don't wanna do. That's the problem with, I mean, surveys. So the surveys, you have to keep the numbers. And if you do want extra comments, they have to be bulleted, so you can just circle them and not actually write them, because otherwise you start giving away who you are.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I agree, that writing styles.
Yeah. So then we're gonna have to, for sure, address the questions as we keep going, just so you know.
Okay.
Because I didn't have that in my brain when I was doing this.
Okay. Alright, follow-up actions. Action planning. Based on survey results, an action plan will be developed to address key areas of improvement. Regular updates will be provided on the implementation of improvements.
Sounds reasonable.
Alright.
Do we need to say who is developing the action plan?
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Town manager. Ultimately, it's probably us to then guide the town manager to implement, and then for the town manager to report back to us.
Yeah, I think it would be okay for the HR director and town manager to develop the plan.
Just so you know, as I say town manager, I'm talking about both of them.
Same, same.
And what about personnel committee?
Oh, yeah.
Well, only if it's things that are addressed by the salary admin plan, so.
Which.
Which, again, are numerous. They're, they're not none, they're not zero, but they're not everything either, so it's, you know, that has to do with benefits, base scale, steps.
Okay.
Action plan developed by the appropriate group, town manager, assistant town manager, HR director, personnel committee. I mean, any one or all of them could be appropriate.
Well, I think out of all of that, like the town manager and HR director are definitely gonna be leading that effort, for sure.
So, as they do in legal documents, I will offer something here. So you may wanna define at the beginning of this what the survey team is. So that would be like the select board, town manager, assistant town manager, PR, and then personnel committee. And then just refer to them. The survey team will do this.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that way you don't have to keep saying it over and over and over.
Yeah, so we could probably add something like that up at the beginning, like where there's purpose, scope, and underneath scope, we could probably add, you know, survey.
Definitions or something, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna make a note.
So who would be on that survey team?
Probably all of us, right? Town manager, HR director, select board, personnel committee. It's probably all four of us, right?
And then we can just say based on the survey results, and then action plan will be developed by the survey team due to various improvement. Yeah, that makes it much simpler.
Okay.
Alright, just putting that there as a placeholder.
Yeah, that looks good.
So developed by the survey team?
Yes.
Okay, can't type anymore.
It's because you're being broadcasted. Forget how to type. Alright, so there was action planning, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think everything else there is fine, right? Alright, communication of results. A summary of survey findings and planned actions will be communicated to employees through town-wide meetings, emails, and internal portals.
Do we have to be so specific?
Yeah, I would say, I'd say will be communicated to employees through a variety of means, such as, and then just name a couple. Or including or something.
Do we also wanna make note here, because the issue that we ran into was that the only thing that was communicated was that summary, and not like the actual results?
And it wasn't, I mean, looking at this, I will clarify, it was not the summary, it was an extract of the summary.
Cherry-picked.
It was. I mean, some of this, I mean, again, I, for whatever reason, I did not see this prior to tonight, and I'm sitting here kinda horrified. You know, I mean, to, to read that, you know, that these low percentages from some of these results, so, you know. It's, this type of information needs to be public. You know, you have 25% of our town not thinking that there's good career opportunities, that the leaders have a vision that motivates them. I mean, this stuff is really disturbing.
Part of the issue with that survey, you know, having the person that took the survey, was it wasn't clear who the leaders were. So as we go through our core questions, it needs to be delineated who these questions are targeted, it needs to be specific. Is this the town manager and the HR director? Is this the select board? Is this your direct manager?
I do.
And I go through that. Obviously, we're gonna have to make some adjustments, but I think that was a failure of that survey. I think that was a failure of that survey, because it's who is this survey talking about?
Right.
And if you look at those results, it looks like it was supposed to be talking about managers, but that was not communicated in the survey.
And there's a lot of variety with these questions, so I do think, as we go through them, you know, given that I've been on the front end of some of these things, you can pick the questions, and you can specify, you know, and sometimes the word leader is very broad, you know, it's unfortunate that that word was chosen instead of specific managers that could have been substituted, you know, it's too broad. Anyway... I will, I will say that seeing, and I, I am seeing, I'm seeing these survey results for the first time too in the last couple of days, I feel fairly confident saying that I don't think this survey was, A, well-planned, both in and of itself, and then what to do with the results, it was poorly handled, if handled at all.
Yeah.
So we should be not looking to this as gaining anything other than, hey, we did something once, and now we're going to build something that's a little more concrete.
Yep, I agree.
Because I don't find anything terribly useful, and yes, I agree with Mr. Jeffries, I think there's a lot of stuff that's really potentially discouraging, that doesn't boil off the top, as a, you know, in my previous job, I begged for employee reviews, so that I would know as a global director in my position, how I was doing, because people very rarely are going to tell you to your face, and couldn't get my company to do one. So, if they're important, to a degree, I mean, I don't want to over, you know, too, because some people, no matter what happens in the world, the world's a terrible place now.
Yep.
I want to be able to address things that are trends, not necessarily that some people, but anyway, I went astray, I think that this format, and then using that as a really...
Don't do that.
Right, well, yeah, yeah, as, as like, just to put it in pottery terms, as a failed pot, okay, we did this once, it really didn't come out well, maybe we need to structure this a little better.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'll still serve as a useful baseline.
Right.
You know, definitely, we can improve on how we actually administer and do these questions.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, monitoring progress. The progress of initiatives resulting from survey feedback will be tracked and reported to the select board.
So who does, who does the tracking?
The survey team.
We're on the survey team.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I know.
Well, since it's reported to the select board, everybody but the select board on the survey team.
Right.
Really, the town manager and the HR director, really, but...
Yeah, I think that's mostly an internal, well, I guess it's, it's personal too, if it's changes to the SAP.
I mean, in my mind, again, and notwithstanding Carter's comment about putting too many tasks on one person, okay, if we take that aside, in an organizational structure, this would all be an HR person's thing to do.
Yep.
And whether, if we don't have a full HR person, then, then I would say that we better put that on our organizational wish list soon and get that done, because we're not, the town's not getting smaller.
If you're using an independent consultant, I think that the oversight of procuring that consultant, working with that consultant to solicit all those questions, codify them all, put them in front of the board, I, I think that's well within the realm of capacity of an HR director. It's the actual carrying out and combining and reporting in a useful way, the results of the survey, that I think would be beyond the daily capacity of an HR...
Well, I mean, so, so, I hear you, and I think my comment back would be, I don't disagree, but I, but that person has to be the point person, and go to the departments and say, department heads, and say, hey, listen, I need to generate this report, and this data has to come from you, I'm not going to, you know, be in the police department or the DPW, or, you know, a town clerk or the board of assessors sitting there watching you do stuff, I need the information from you, but they would be the, the traffic cop directing all that. And I think the select board should be, I mean, even as we're, again, looking at this, we've, we've asked for the full survey to be provided to us, and this is not the full survey, this is a summary.
The full survey is in there, it's a...
It's a...
Did I miss it?
CSV file.
CSV, it's not easy to look at, but it's all there.
It's all the data, but it's in a very raw form, so it's hard to parse, but it is there.
I haven't spent a ton of time looking at that, I saw it, I opened it, but...
I opened it.
And then the questions don't fit in the columns.
Yeah, so I didn't, and you can't look at it on this, it's at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to work on the iPad.
I highly, I have to say, I, you know, let me not make assumptions here, you know, company hired to do a job, I would assume that they're going to provide a work product that's readable, and so what is that readable work product? That, you know, I would assume that they must have provided it. If we cut them a check and said they did the job, then we must have got a work product out of them that wasn't this hard to read.
That's something to be aware of, because as we want the results, we want to be able to read them, we don't want that CSV file and summaries, we want the full results in a readable format.
Yeah.
That is something that we need to...
I, I say some of this, because I was hesitant coming in here about whether or not we should take this fully on ourselves, how much we should share, but I, you know, after seeing the quality of information that's being provided, I think we absolutely should take this on ourselves, and I think that we have to work directly with this company, so that way we don't get five-slide summaries and impossible-to-read Excel files. I think when we interview potential candidates to this far, is you start with, I want to see your end product, not I want to see your start product.
Yes.
Where you actually...
Want to see, show me a report that you provided somebody, and then tell us about how you got to this report, how much that cost, because, you're right, I mean, I want to know that I'm going to get something at the end, and it's going to work, I mean, I don't go to my car mechanic, and I don't want to know the digital output of my computer, I want to know that you've told me what the problem was and that you fixed it...
Right.
In, like, English terms that I can understand. Yeah, and Coltrant bills themselves, the company that was used for this one, as providing, you know, a really good work product, so the questions were...
Those PowerPoints were really good, so I'm assuming that they also produce a PDF.
Has anyone reached out to them specifically if we can't find it internally? Do we know? Has, has...
They have. I've been told that they have been, because of changes they've had, it there has been difficult to really communicate with, but I will follow up on that in the morning and get you a better answer.
Yeah, because I think we need to push that, especially because if we paid $12,000, I don't know what we actually paid for this, but if we paid a substantial amount of money, they, we need that work product.
Right, I'm sure it was substantial, so...
And I think, especially as we get into this next section, I mean, you completed the survey, as I remember discussing with the town manager, I thought there was like a hundred questions from that.
Ooh, I thought it was like forty-five, maybe, I mean, it was two, it was over two years ago now, I can't remember, and it also was, you know, one of those...
It should be on that spreadsheet, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that spreadsheet should have...
Well, I don't think the Excel spreadsheets, those presentations, I don't think it has all the questions.
No, no, it doesn't even have a fraction of them, there was much, many more, but again, sections that came up, and it said, like, there was a lot of overlap, and again, it wasn't clear who you were talking about, and it almost was seeming repetitive, but it didn't say, like, oh, and it said, like, managers, but I guess that wasn't really about your direct manager, it was more about town management, or people were answering it too subjectively, so it needs to be very clear.
On the front end, I, I'm aware that Coltrant provided the town manager office with a series of questions to pick from, and you can also tailor and combine, so, you know, the questions that were decided, were decided from a palette, and, and that's, I think, what we need to make sure doesn't get so muddy going forward, that, you know, leader can mean too many things, you know, but anyway, and I, I may be jumping ahead a little bit, because I was looking through some of these questions, I think, in order for me to really be informed about what you have listed here as attachment A, I would like to really compare it to the questions that were previously asked, or even if we have the template of questions that they initially provided, and said, here are the questions that are options.
Yeah, as we go further, I think that last part, which we still had two sections before them, but I think that, that the questions we need to really think about and digest, and I think that's an important, an important piece, I tried to put, you know, some of the baseline in here, but I definitely think we're going to need to work on those, especially if those are going to be our core questions that we use every year, I think that would be important, and I'm looking at that CSV, and I don't think it has everything, because if you look at the number...
No, it only has, it only has fourteen columns.
And it says Lunenburg, if you look at the top row, Lunenburg nine, eight, ten, twenty-eight, one of them's like fifty-two, so there's at least fifty-two questions, fifty-three, so, I do, I do think we need those, as we continue to go, that's just something else here.
Alright, so two more sections here. So, review and evaluation. This policy will be reviewed annually to ensure it meets the evolving needs of the town and its employees, adjustments will be made as necessary based on survey insights and organizational priorities. What do we think about that one?
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's good.
I like leaving it annually, even if we're conducting the surveys, you know, by, what do we just say, biannually, is that how we decide it on?
Biannually.
Because that way if we decide, hey, now, this is, we need to change it, or increase it, or whatever, I think, at least putting our eyes on it, especially as the board evolves.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yep.
Alright, policy compliance. The town manager and assistant town manager slash HR director are responsible for ensuring the annual climate survey, not annual anymore, is conducted each year, biannually, failure to do so may result in a review by the select board and recommendations for corrective actions.
Do we need that second sentence?
No, no.
No.
Okay.
Take it out.
Okay. Alright, now on to the attachments. Alright, so let's just read through them. So, attachment A is the climate survey questions, so section one is select board leadership, and then I'll just read them. Do you feel the select board establishes clear strategic goals that support the town's overall operations? Yes, no, unsure, with space for comments. On a scale of one through ten, how well do you believe the select board provides effective policy oversight to support the work environment? Do you believe select board policies support the operational effectiveness of your department? What suggestions do you have for how the select board can enhance its policy setting and oversight functions to support employees?
Can we, if I may ask, you know, this board is elected by the voters, we're answerable to the voters, and sometimes what the voters want isn't necessarily what staff want, obviously I support staff, but to me, what we're evaluating is the effective administration of government, not commentary on elected officials, so I'm not so much in favor even having section one as presented, but I do think everything else that you've provided is relevant, but I also haven't been an employee of the town, and so I don't, you know, I can't gauge, but, you know, if an employee tells us that, you know, for example, if an employee says that, how well do you believe the select board provides effective policy oversight to support the work environment? I mean, I know a lot of staff watch our meetings, but I don't know if we should be working or marching to the, it's harder for the public to provide this kind of input to us without directly coming to a meeting, there's no anonymous way for them to do it, I, I'm just a little concerned about the voice, I guess.
I, I hear that concern, as a, as a staffer, which is where my head was as I was thinking about this, there was no connection between the board and town staff, so I was trying to put another level, level of connection, maybe it's just one question or two, or maybe we adjust it, but I think it is important, there was, I believe, and I could be misremembering, I thought that the select board was referenced at least in one or two questions on the previous survey, but again, I could be misremembering, I mean, we do, we are the policy board in the, you know, of the entire town, so I do think it's important for them to have that, you know, our feedback is always going down, but theirs should be able to come all the way up.
Yeah.
Even if it's not informing our actions, I don't know.
Notwithstanding the fact that I think what you said is correct, I don't think that their feeling about being supported from the town, at least on the first two questions, because we do set goals for the town manager, we've agreed when we set our goals even this year, that our goals are to be disseminated through the town manager and the rest of the body, well, if, if the employees don't think that we're even setting good goals, that's important for us to know, I think, and it, and, and since this is going to be a public record, not just released to the employees, but to the general public, I think it would be good for the public to know that. So, questions one and two, I think, address that, questions three and four, you know, suggestions, well, you know, come to a select board meeting, or put in anonymous...
I think especially if we're trying to just keep it in numbers, or yes or no, and not, and spaces for comments, and I think we need to adjust those things too.
So I think one and two, at least as far as it affects their, like, I think number two provides effective policy oversight, I mean, that's what we do, we do policy, so if they feel like there are policies that we're not addressing that affect the workplace, I think it's a fair criticism. Question three, I think gets more into what the town as a whole, this town meeting decides to fund, and four, what suggestions, again, I'm, I'm not a big for what suggestions person, at least not in this kind of format.
Yep.
Alright, so you think we should keep one and two, and then just get rid of three and four?
That's my personal feeling.
Yeah, alright, what do you guys think? Renee?
Yeah, I definitely think four should go, two and three, I see some overlap, I can, so eliminating three, I'm not sure we lose out on anything really, if we keep two.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Because, I mean, policies to support the work environment, policies to support operational effectiveness, effectiveness of the department, I mean, you could even combine them.
Hmm.
Mm.
Yeah, we could.
Right.
And, and three doesn't, it's a yes or no, it's not on a scale, you know, like, generally surveys are on, you know, do you agree, it's, you know, this statement, strongly disagree, strongly agree, although, you know, the five...
With the thirty-seven, the thirty-seven circles in the middle, somewhat agree, somewhat disagree, somewhat strongly agree.
By the, this survey that we did...
That's when you just get, you start click, 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 just get through it, I mean, that's why you have to be, you...
Right.
I think that's also important.
There's an art to these surveys, right? To designing the questions and, and the potential answers, to get honest, to get feedback, one, participation, and honest feedback, like, there's, people do this, right?
I will say, right, I will say...
And like, seven possible choices, too many.
I will be the first to say, this is not anywhere near, the questions themselves now, nowhere near my wheelhouse, nowhere near my interest, okay, and yet, if you're going to have something that's effective, you need somebody who can thread a needle between getting people to want to voluntarily address it, and if you put 150 questions, no one's going to finish, and if you put three questions, you're not going to get a lot of information, so it's somewhere in between, and that's going to be important to design.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it is a profession to design these, I think, for me to be able to opine much more, and, and I think, again, reading through them, I think this is a great start, but maybe for our fall workshop, it would be helpful to get, again, the plethora of questions that were provided from the company on the front end for the town manager to pick from, and I think that once we have that, we can see, okay, what were the ones that were looking for leadership, and then we can tailor this language a little bit more, because, again, these companies do this professionally, they know how to extract that information, and so I would use that as a guide for these.
And they'll, they'll even put a question in, word it slightly differently, but targeted to get the same, there's, there's nuances to this, right? That, that's not, yeah, that's not my...
But, I agree.
Maybe, if we're, if we're backing up a little bit, maybe when we're talking about our core questions, maybe we say, you know, these are the core questions, or something similar, you know, something to allow, allow a little bit of wiggle room in the language if the company says...
Yeah, like, what I imagine is kind of a collaborative effort with whoever's going to do this, like, look, this is, these are the, our goals for this, like, what we want to get out of it, what we want to hear about, and, and work with them to design the questions to get that information.
And I also just want to make sure we have consistency, or, you know, say we do, you know, three surveys over however many, whatever year, six years, we should, my thought on having the core questions was so we can look at the trends, because if they change every year, we're only targeting the specific areas, there's that balance of, like, being able to adjust the questions versus also keeping consistency to be able to monitor our trends.
And any new employees should have the opportunity to answer those core questions, you know, as well, if they missed the first survey and they're coming in, you want to capture them.
I mean, course, questions help provide consistency, but I think what I'm, what I'm really hearing is the topics as well, that we care about evaluation on some scale of select board, I, I don't know about leadership, select board policymaking, that we, you know, I think your subject headers here are good, the only one that I would add in is the, where was it, staff development.
Right.
But I think they're the right subjects, which is.
Yeah, I think I had comments about staff development underneath the direct manager, but I think happy to.
Yeah.
That was the professional goals ones, but we can.
So if I may, so first I want to say, this is an excellent framework to start, so excellent regard here. That being said, I would say the attachment is probably something we, A, want to review separate, and we want to review with, like, this would be something we'll need to get some consultant in, even to get to this point.
Yes.
Because, again, I wouldn't have anything, I wouldn't have anything to go on, and.
We need the pros.
I don't have the experience, I mean, I will also be upfront in saying that probably, I don't know where everybody else stands on this, I'm not a, I don't put a lot of stock in what comes because it's voluntary, so you don't get 100% participation. Some people have access to grind, so, you know, I mean, even advertisers and companies who spend lots of money, get questionable results. So I want to do it because I want to give people the opportunity, maybe something will come up out of it, but I wouldn't know what questions to start.
No, I agree, so maybe we can just adjust it, you know, and we just say, you know, a list of core questions to be determined or developed by, you know, in conjunction with a survey team and the.
Well, we can go back, right, we can adopt the framework and then add the addendum.
And I think on the framework, what you're saying is, we're in the same, I think we're saying the same thing here, which is, maybe tonight we don't have the the skill set to go through the questions.
Yeah.
We can pick the subjects, right, of what we're looking to test, and I agree with them, the only one I would add is staff development.
But I think even like as I go down, you can see they start getting shorter because my brain was like, I don't know what I'm doing here, I'm trying. I think I have a lot of room for open-ended things, which I think agree doesn't make sense in the way we're framing this, it really needs to be quantifiable data. So I think a lot of them, as I did list them out, would have to change, I think it's appropriate to kind of.
Were you thinking that these attachments would be included in the policy, or these would be separate that we would then maintain as like the core questions?
I guess I was assuming it would be an attachment to the policy, but I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, again, this is not my area, so I don't know if you would change the core questions, or maybe you'd have a list of 50 core questions at every survey you would choose, and you'd have more than enough for each survey, so every time around you would swap up which ones you included, so, I mean, it could be potentially done in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, but like you said, that's where we get the guidance from.
Right.
I would be okay with pulling them out of the policy and then including language in the policy that says, you know, the survey team will maintain a set of core questions that will be included, so it's also easier to change, right, without having to update our policy, you know? But we would still have it and maintain it.
But I do think this policy should extract these subject areas, what we're looking for.
I would agree that, yes, the core questions will be in these subject areas, yes.
And that's going back to the purpose, right, it goes based off of like the four areas that we said that we're going to be conducting the survey for, so.
Right.
Yep, and ultimately, we would have final approval on what the survey would look like.
Yeah.
Which I just want to make sure that we, being the board, not we as individuals.
Yeah.
Again, that there's, you know, consistency, that we can look at trends over time, and so I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, okay, all right, cool. So we can keep going through these, I think maybe it'll be beneficial for us to just have more time to read through it and then we can talk about it another time. But it sounds like we might pull this out of the policy anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would think so, at least, again, like Mr. Jeffrey said, maybe just keep a framework of what subjects will be, core questions will be asked in these major topic areas.
Yeah, I agree with that. We could add that, let's see.
I feel like my brain is a little fried at this point, looking at this. I'm not sure I would be able to be like, okay, these are all, looking at my section, I like them, but.
So the section that I think would probably go under survey administration, right, with the frequency, survey timeline, and survey design. So maybe we could add a bullet point under survey design, which has, there would be a core set of questions with the following categories, or something like that.
Oh, instead of just saying addressing job satisfaction, we would say, you know, select board policy, whatever we just said, policymaking, town manager, assistant town manager, leadership, director, supervisor, leadership, I don't know.
Well, I think it's your second bullet, right? So your second bullet says a survey will include a set of mandatory core questions addressing. And somehow we, I think we just reworked that second bullet to incorporate.
I think it would have a sub-bullet with the lists of essentially the section headers, but however we want to include them.
Yeah, and I would just modify select board leadership to select board policymaking, that's my suggestion.
Renee, I'm trying to figure out where you're adding that bullet point, over distribution and collection, okay.
Yeah, I was looking at.
So whether the.
Yeah, so it's pretty much.
Having a core set of questions is a separate bullet, or put it under here?
I would put it under there, and instead of, so where it says, the survey will include a set of mandatory core questions addressing, and then I would put a an ellipsis and then a sub-bullet and list out the, but I'm an ellipsis, what's the?
Colon.
Ellipsis, ellipsis is three dots.
Three dots.
What is the two dots?
Colon.
Colon? I need to go to bed. Not an ellipsis.
What is she talking about?
I'm still here, okay?
It's all right, we've all had this, we're a twelve-hour day.
A colon, and yeah, that's what I would do, and I would list our section headers, so, select board, policymaking.
Okay, hold on.
You guys make me nervous when you say it's a long day, it's like nine o'clock, I mean, I feel like I'm at the geriatric club when the people start saying, at nine o'clock. Oh my God, it's so late.
I get up at four, five until.
I got up at four thirty.
I get up at seven, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Well, there's three hours.
No, it's mentally, because, yeah, you come straight here after work, it's a long day.
You all get it.
My alarm went off at fifteen.
Okay, select board policymaking, what else, what was the other one?
Town manager and assistant town manager, HR director, leadership, was my second one, I don't know.
Yep, I think that's perfect.
Direct manager supervisor.
Assistant town manager, HR, God, director.
Leadership.
Leadership.
And then section three is direct manager slash supervisor.
And then we want to add one, right, for staff development.
Is that leadership to a direct manager supervisor, or just leave it as?
Doesn't say.
It just says direct manager supervisor.
Okay, and staff development?
Yes, and then the last one is job satisfaction.
There was three more, but.
Oh, there's three more.
There's just a weird space there, sorry.
There's workplace, job satisfaction, there's workplace environment.
I'm adding these two?
Yes.
We don't have to, if you guys think, again.
Jobs.
I mean, we'll digest it all, right, this is the first iteration.
Oh, we're just going to put it in for now and then we'll go back and think about it?
Mm-hmm.
Next section is communication and feedback.
Yeah, probably.
Oh, no, that's not right.
Because I think seven is really open-ended, so I'm not sure we can.
And that sort of stuff will be covered.
Yeah, so a survey question of what is the town doing well?
Listen, it got a little bit. Then at the end.
You were getting them in, yeah, last question, how are you holding up?
How are you?
Are you okay?
Strongly disagree.
Yeah.
Is that?
Sometimes.
That's good.
Somewhat agree. All right, all right, so I think that's it for tonight. So thank you again, Amanda has a comment.
Yes, that was.
Oh, go ahead.
I have a question that ties into budget. If I can find 6,000 in this year's budget, that pays for half, and then I would put 6,000 in next year's budget, that gives you results based upon your timeline at some point in November of '25. If we put the first half of the money in FY '26 and the second half in FY '27, and this is similar to, I understand how you budget your OPEB, you basic, study, you basically break it into the two years, you would not have results until November of '26. Which way would you like me to develop the budget?
I would like to see it sooner rather than later, personally.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I agree. All right, anything else you want to cover on this tonight?
I want to acknowledge Amanda's good work on this.
Yeah.
You know, I've said this, I've said this privately to Amanda, I don't want to say it publicly, you know, I'm sitting next to you, I am always so impressed with how prepared you are for all of our meetings, the notes you have typed up, the questions, you know, for different topics. You're very prepared, and so, you know, this is certainly keeping in that order where, you know, something that you haven't addressed before, but you did a lot of research, you pulled this together in a way to really facilitate a good conversation, so I appreciate that, Amanda, I appreciate you being on this board and your contribution to the team.
Thank you. You're here.
Yep, I second that, all right, cool. Moving on, current business, new town manager update.
So, well, we had some discussion about this earlier, but, so, I, after our last Wednesday meeting, I spoke with the, at the request of the board, spoke with the candidate that we had chosen, set up meetings, I sent an email to all of you that you should have spoken with her, hopefully everybody has, and I am meeting tomorrow with her at the library at six with the, you know, the template contract that we reviewed in the executive session, and I will report back on that, I understand I will be doing this, and I think it'll make it easier just one-on-one with her, so I will report back, if everything, if nothing comes back to be re-discussed, I will let the board know that, I'll let the chair know that we should have an executive session to accept, if there is something to discuss, I'll notify the chair if we need to have a quick meeting somehow before, because I think it's all of our best interests and probably we all have it on our mind to get this
Signed as quickly.
Right, signed as quickly as possible and get a handoff from Carter to the new town manager, so that is the update.
Agreed, awesome, thank you, any questions?
Yes, what's, if the, if negotiations, everything's agreed as is tomorrow?
No, I think that we could see something early, as early as, I don't know, end of January? That would be the end of next week, I mean, again, I don't want to, I don't want to get it, the cart in front of the horse. That's what I'd like, so maybe that's wishful thinking.
And we do have a meeting next week, right?
Tendatively, yeah.
Right.
Tendably, is that an if and only if we're signing a contract, or?
Yeah, if it's only if it's necessary for the.
I thought we were going to do next week and then not do the fourth, am I?
We mentioned it.
We did toy that, toy with that idea, doesn't matter to me which one we do, just let me know.
We have the, the fourth is the date that we have contracted with the architects to provide a presentation to the select board.
Oh, I thought that was, I'm sorry.
So then we said possibly not the 11th.
I was, I was thinking it was opposite, I thought it was just municipal building design, so you weren't going to be here and Renee wasn't going to be here, that's why, but I just confused that in my brain.
Yeah, no, it's just Renee, so, yeah, if there's a.
But Tom won't be here on the 11th.
I won't be here on the 11th.
Right, yeah, all right, anything else on that?
Wait, so are we having a meeting or are we not?
I don't think we've decided.
We don't know at this, so, what are you talking about, in February?
No, 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 next week.
Next week, it depends on how the conversation is going.
I'll let, I'll let the chair know tomorrow, yeah.
All right.
Is that a strongly disagree?
That's it, are you okay?
Minimally agree.
All right.
Objectives, objectives are well, are well set out and easy to determine.
It is that hour of the night, all right, all right, let's move on. So discussion on Community Preservation Act next step, so it's later in the evening that I thought it would be at this point. We are going to have something on the agenda to go through all the recommendations of the Budget Task Force recommendations, but I did take this one out for this workshop to be considered separately, because it seemed like there was a lot of discussion, and you know, I think out of all the recommendations, this one probably would require the most work if we decided to move forward with it. So I just wanted to have that discussion to see if there is any interest in moving forward with this one this year.
For me, the answer to that, it'd be determined upon what is the payback at the state at this point. In the past, it was 100%, now, if we're getting to the point where it's 10% or 15%, I don't know, that is worth it, and we just might as well save the money ourselves.
Sure, it really varies from what I've seen, it really varies.
Yeah, I think the lowest I've seen was a 40%, and I think the common is 60% right now.
It's not that low.
Well, then it's not so bad, but in order to really make that money, you really have to go to the max in 3%. Which is what we've run in the past.
That's the rub.
Again, maybe the demographics, I mean, the override was different than I had, it was what I wanted, but it's not what I predicted.
Sure.
So, maybe, maybe it's, not by mod, I mean, it was a very close thing, so maybe this would pass this time, I don't know, I think.
I was just, I mean, do you think we could, on our own, save and get a 14% return consistently?
No.
No, not in municipal.
Right, right, because.
Not in municipal investments with the laws in place.
And that's lower than realistically what we would be getting, Carter.
The issue is you don't have room within the tax cap to be raising the equivalent to whatever the CPA might get you. So 14% of zero is zero, whereas the CPA is outside of the tax cap.
Right.
It's a surcharge, yeah.
That's, that's the real challenge.
I think that, you know, for the discussion of next steps, I think one thing is, we need to identify what the average homeowner see in an increase in their tax bill if it's voted for. So I think that, you know, we've talked about this 3%, that's when you maximize, what does that mean to someone at home? I think that that's one thing for next up. Another question is, how long do you need to be a committee that's in CPA before you can get any benefits from it? So, you know, we have, you know, this building project that we seem to be moving forward with this year, it would be awful if we go forward with like this and then try to do a 3% you know, whatever that means, and then find that this product is not included, and, you know, and this is a pretty significant product to not be included. So I think that that's a question that we need a clear answer to.
So it's my understanding how it works, let's say that it's before town meeting, it passes, it goes to the ballot, it passes, then a community preservation committee is informed, and they're the ones that decide which projects ultimately the funds are going to go towards, but they don't decide, right, they're, they sort of act advisory in that sense. It then goes to town meeting, right, the legislative body, who then approves that plan.
That's correct.
So if it, that would be this year, it would have to be at least, probably next year, by the time we would get any funds from it, if it passes this year.
There's no, there's no, like, you know, sophomore year or weigh-in period, once you're in it, any money you get, you can use. Community preservation committee is the only one who can bring article, just like the select board is the only body that can bring an override. The capital planning, the community preservation committee is the only committee that could bring the use of those funds to town meeting, but town meeting has the final say. But you can't have a, you know, a citizen petition to say, I want to use this, that's not allowed.
Right.
As far as the 3% or whatever percent you choose, it's on, it's a percentage of what your tax bill would be. So if your average tax bill is $5,000, if your tax bill is $5,000 and we chose 3%, then you'd pay $150 more.
It's, it's on your assessed value, and there are exemptions you can put in place, like you could exempt the first $100,000 of your value.
Right.
And that I would totally be favored doing.
And there's other, there's other exemptions, age and income, there's all kinds of, yeah.
So, but all that can be calculated upfront, yes.
For sure.
I, I think the other next up is, you know, there's other components to this, like the affordable housing piece, and I think there's even the conservation piece.
If I remember correctly, there's open space preservation, there's historical preservation, there's housing, and then I forget what the fourth one is. Actually, I probably have one somewhere.
Yeah.
Recreational use is the fourth one.
Yeah, open space and recreation use is like together.
And I'll also point out, there's, state law determines the makeup of the community preservation committee, right? So there has to be someone from the conservation commission, there's to be someone from the historical commission, I don't remember all the other ones, but.
But all those, all those uses, right, all those three uses or four uses, they have a.
But we do have the ability to add additional seats too.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think, so I think that that's where I think we need to have just a little more information, is the impact in those other areas, especially like the affordable housing, what does that mean, is that, you know, what does that mean?
Well, Renee, you guys really looked into.
Rental assistance is also in scope.
Same question.
Rental assistance is, qualifies for that category.
I was just going to say the same thing, I think Caesar's sorry cut you off, on the budget task force, you know, was there a general opinion? I know it was brought forward as an idea, but was there a general, you know, feeling of whether?
I think there was general support, because it's, it's, it's money on the table, right? And with Marshall Park especially, it's a big project, that would be eligible.
And the buildings, right, whether it's historic buildings.
Historic buildings, but the timing is in question, that's the, that's the issue there, but.
It's worth looking at.
I mean, some towns do have their money sitting there for a long time.
So.
And then sometimes that's intentional, they build it up, build it up to get, you know, like $2 million or something, and then they trigger a project.
There's a, there's a new fund that. Well, there's a, there's a new fund that Representative Scarsdale made reference to, and I don't know where we're at, if it's been approved. I know she had proposed it, but a new fund that, that, you know, I had been on their case about how, you know, the schools get up to fifty percent in times reimbursement, that municipality, especially these towns, that, you know, we need some help.
For buildings in particular?
Thinking for buildings, yes. And she had mentioned that she had proposed this program that would essentially create like a twenty-five percent reimbursement or fund. So I, I'd like to know, I can reach out to her, but that's another component, because we already have a mechanism that provides twenty-five percent of funding and, you know, that, then I think then we need to do the math and see what, what the benefit is to the taxpayer for doing the CPA route.
All right. Carter?
Just to give you a quick and dirty number, the average tax bill, thanks to the affordability ratio table I was able to pull up right here, is sixty-eight hundred bucks. If you exempt the first one hundred thousand dollars of value, you're exempting fifteen hundred, which leaves you with fifty-three hundred dollars. A one percent surcharge is fifty-three dollars. A three percent surcharge would be a hundred and fifty. Obviously, that would have a, a very, very broad spectrum, but just to give you a very quick and dirty.
It gives you the average.
Right. The one thing that people, and if people are listening to this, what, the one thing the three percent or the two percent or the one percent isn't, isn't in addition to the tax rate. That has nothing to do with the tax rate.
I have to say that three percent number is actually a lot lower than I thought it would be, so.
Yeah, but the hard, as we know, you know, the, once this gets implemented, if it gets implemented, it's, you know, maintaining it is one thing, but it's that first year hit, right? That, that's the question where you have, you know, a three percent increase in your tax bill, you know, income doesn't go up by that much if you're on a set income, you know.
I was gonna say, I would wanna look at, you know, all the exemptions, which I know we looked at briefly, but I think it's important to make sure we're taking those into considerations.
So it seems like the next step is really like digging into the exemptions and getting those numbers.
Well, I think it's a lot of things that we just said, including that.
All right. Any other discussion on that tonight? All right, moving on to old business. Sauerhold Fifty-Five Carr Avenue. Carter, I think you had some updated information on that?
So, moving from what you were initially told by the collector on.
Oh.
Is that what the reason?
Oh, I'm like.
Yeah, the boo.
The memorandum in your drive, I think, is called Lunenburg New Tax Title Process. And moving beyond what we were initially told by the collector, I put together the collector, Izzy, and arranged a Zoom or Teams meeting with David Coppola, who is counsel for all of your tax title issues. All the discussion I'm gonna give you is related to properties that were foreclosed on after November one of two thousand and twenty-four with one exception. That exception, excuse me, is that if you had a property owner who was foreclosed upon between May twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-one, which was the effective date of the Supreme Court case, and the statute, which was effective November one, two thousand and twenty-four, if you'd sold or retained any properties in that time, those property owners have twelve months from November one of two thousand and twenty-four to appeal the manner in which you dealt with their properties. I, I don't know that you did, but they have that. So this, this issue of within the fourteen days of the foreclosure judgment being issued, you must notify the property owner of your decision to retain or to sell. You'll find a footnote on there, because this is one portion of the statute that doesn't comport to other sections of the statute, because it relates to it being triggered by the thirty-day appeal period. So when you're told fourteen days, it's really forty-four days, and the footnote, I think, will help explain that a little bit better. With relation to Mr. Alonso's question, I've tried to capture it here that, you know, could you, instead of retaining the property, but still having some desire over controlling how it might be used in the future, could you simply put deed restrictions on it and then sell it in a restricted fashion? Counsel strongly recommends against this course of action. There's a footnote explaining what his thoughts were, and also an alternative approach I'll speak to in a minute. So, within a hundred and twenty days of the foreclosure judgment being issued, let's say that you've decided to sell it or to retain it. You must obtain an appraisal for the land at its highest and best use and submit the same to the property owner. So you wanna retain it, that is, you go and you get this appraisal, and it has to be completed by a hundred and twenty days. The appraiser must be independent of the town, so you can't ask the tax assessor to do it for you, and it must be procured in compliance with forty B. So then, in that instance, if you're going to retain the property, you can tally up what you are owed for taxes, principal and interest, but that is only through the date of the judgment or foreclosure. It doesn't keep tolling on. You can also charge other related costs as you can today, cleanup, property protection, attorneys, filing, and the like. You then take that appraisal at its highest and best use, and you deduct all of those expenses, and if you are still owed money, it's your property, you don't have to pay anything out. But if there is a surplus, you have to pay that out within thirty days. So you need to have, whether you keep a sufficiently large enough contingency fund or reserve fund with your finance committee, or you have a special expendable trust fund, or you, you, you know, deal with it, however you think you need to deal with it, the money needs to be ready available. Now, the good news here is if you don't have someone to pay the money over two and thirty days, you have eighteen months to turn the money over to the State Treasurer's Division of Unclaimed Property. So if you're going to retain the property, slightly different timeline, you have a hundred and twenty days to retain a licensed real estate agent and offer the property for sale on a MLS or equivalent listing at a price equivalent to that determined to be its highest and best use. In this instance, there's no separate appraisal required. You can accept the word of the real estate agent as to what it should be put on the market for. You must then offer it for sale for twelve months. And if you get any offers within that twelve months, there are at least two-thirds of the appraised value, you, you can sell it. You don't have to wait the full twelve months. If you don't get any offers within the twelve months that are at that two-thirds value, you can go to auction. Actually, you have to go to auction. You can no longer use the old sealed bid process. And in this instance, you have to have a licensed auctioneer carry it out for you. Then again, if there's any proceeds, same issue. You tally it up, you determine what's balanced, and you have to send the proceeds out within thirty days, and you have the eighteen months to turn it over to the unclaimed property division of the treasurer, state treasurer. So kind of a supplementals, and I think going back to those footnotes will be helpful to you. Supplemental issues and questions, we talked about keeping an appraiser and a real estate broker and maybe even a title examiner on retainer might be in your best interest. You do it once, you do it for a three-year contract, now you're all set. You don't have to keep churning, and you don't wanna be doing this for every property. I'm told that the Massachusetts Treasure Collectors Association is in the process of looking at a boilerplate solicitation for those services, so I'd suggest you wait and see what comes out of their spring conference, which I think will be in May or June. If you don't pay the property owner out with, within one year of the notice, they have the right to redeem the tax judgment and repossess the property. So you tell them you're gonna put it up for sale. By now, the clock's been moving. You don't have any offers within the total twelve-month period. You haven't paid them out. They can come in and say, yeah, the foreclosure judgment's nice, but we're gonna redeem the property. So now it becomes a statutory right, not the action you had to go through the other night, or a few nights ago. I'm told that the Land Court's taking nine to twelve months if it's fairly clean title and the town has followed all of the correct procedures. I'd love to tell you that that is always the case, but it is unfortunately not. For those of you who remember or have worked with the land of low value process, no changes to that, and just current policy will need a total review and rewrite. With respect to making a decision as to whether or not to take a property to foreclosure, please remember, you don't ever have to take the property to foreclosure. So counsel's advice is, when in doubt, do nothing. So that's really the best, oh, the last thing I kinda wanna talk about is the due diligence of finding the property owner. Who do you give that notice to? Who do you try to give the money back to? Counsel says that in the normal filing of action for foreclosure, they have either done enough research to be comfortable and have a mailing address, or they do notice by publication. So there is little, if any, additional due diligence on our part with respect to contacting these people and sending them their money. So that is, I, I, I hope that's of some usefulness to you. That's the best I can tell you today. You might, I only, we had the meeting on Wednesday, so I just got a chance to write this late this afternoon. So you might wanna wait till the next meeting. If you think there's enough here in what you've heard, you could make that decision tonight. As I say, it's a little, little different than what we originally thought.
All right. Any questions or comments on all of that first?
No, I appreciate it. It's a lot of info, and, yeah, thanks. It's a lot of questions.
I agree. Very informative. Thank you, Carter.
So just to ask at this point, is anyone interested in retaining this property?
I'm interested in not making a decision tonight.
Yeah.
Same.
All right.
And again, counsel did give you that workaround.
Yep.
For your consideration.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, the workaround, so I'm gonna consider it.
All right. Any other discussion on this tonight? All right. Carter, do you wanna go into the town manager report?
If you don't mind, we've actually been quite busy, I think, and have some good news on the horizon here for you. Obviously, as we discussed, we met finance team with tax counsel. DPW director and I met with Sean Sons to review their experiences to date in implementing the MSW, Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling Contract, and at our end, Bill reports it as being seamless and virtually problem-free. He's gotten few, if, well, he's gotten a few, but very, very few complaints, far fewer than he thought.
They came on the holiday on Monday, and they were there as I was leaving my house at eight-thirty, so.
The only thing that they did bring to our attention is a disparity in the tonnage they're collecting on the different routes, and it's tonnage, and especially recycling, that really wears on the truck. So they've asked, spoken to us about some route changes, and what we've said to them is, get them all prettied up, and we'll make a presentation of the select board, which lets us present to the town. We'll do a flyer to everybody, and then within a reasonable period of time after that, you know, thinking more like April one, we could implement those, those changes. That'll make their life simpler, and frankly, they like our relationship. That makes our life simpler. The DPW facilities and enterprise funds teams met to review a potential realignment of administrative support functions to more effectively meet the needs of the various units contained within that team. For instance, the town manager's office bills out the water bills. I'm not at all sure why. And there's a split of responsibilities with the DPW staff, but also supporting facilities. They're physically separated. So I have put them together and said, I don't have any more money to give you. So often, a better way to deal with things is to look first and foremost at a realignment of duties, you know. I know the first solution for many people is, give me more money and I'll have more people, and that's kind of where I try to arrive at last. You know, let's look at the structure and the way we do things first. We had a similar meeting with finance, administration, and IT. We've talked about HR, we've talked about procurement, we've talked about, I think, you know, not having the best grants management system. We don't have a good contract management system. So we've put them together also and asked them to have a similar overview. I met with facilities director relative to developing a plan to decommission portions of TC Passios. We can't continue to manage a hundred percent of the building, so just as a very, very quick heads up, the idea is the southern portion, which is not at this point, I guess, scheduled for demolition in the long range. Can we pull back into that? Maybe have, you know, facilities and parks over there, which would free up some space in the Ritter Building. So I spoke with the building commissioner this morning and the fire chief, and have asked him and them and the facilities director to get to ASAP, you know, get, get to this ASAP. It's not as simple as just cutting off a few pipes. And if we are gonna do it, we wanna make sure that it makes some sense going out into the future, not just for fiscal twenty-six, but fiscal twenty-six and beyond perhaps. I've had initial budget hearings with finance, land use, and public safety teams, and in striving my best to have a pile of, well, it wouldn't be a pile if it was electronic, but to have a plethora of material, depending upon the entry of your incoming town manager. So we have a draft warrant working, and we have a draft, we have the concept of a budget. And we are saying, I don't know if I can say prayers, but we're, we're certainly hopeful on a daily basis that when the cherry sheet is released tomorrow, it is supposed to be released, well, the governor's budget has to be released tomorrow, so sometimes it takes DOR an extra day to, to get it all up. We're hoping that there'll be this massive infusion of money that will help meet all of our needs. So, you know, just, just by a way of example, your retirement went up three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Your, all your new revenues for the town side of the house will probably be under six hundred and fifty to seven hundred thousand dollars, and your retirement went up roughly half of that. So please say good thoughts for the document being released tomorrow. On our project updates, the DPW projects, the roof and the garage floor are at substantial completion without any significant contingency being needed. We await warranties, removal of some equipment. There's a lift down there for the roof, and final invoicing to be able to call them complete. So that has, has come along to closure nicely, I think. The town hall roof replacement and chimney restoration began last week. Tough time of year to begin. Had great weather last week. I don't think we're gonna see them out there this week. We have had to temporarily reduce the occupancy for this room to forty-nine persons. In my time with you, we've never exceeded that, and the reason is, I have to close the exit door, and at fifty people, I need two exits. So the building commissioner simply reduced the occupancy load for now to forty-nine to get us through that. Ritter Building Roof and Gutter Repair has been awarded. We're awaiting a start date, and the library teen room should begin in early February. Teen room will be temporarily closed. Chris is working via state bid pricing to expend the council on agent. Kitchen monies fiscal year '21. I'd love to have one year that's all closed up before I leave. That's why they're pushing them for January 30 to get that done. Uh, and this Council on Agent HVAC units, so, um, we're trying to get all those bids in by next, um, the, next Friday, so we can close that up. Uh, with respect to, uh, your, um, recruitment of personnel, uh, we have a PAC videographer pending background check right now. So, it'd be nice to get that one off, off the list. Uh, the assistant to the sewer business manager remains open, but as I mentioned, we're looking at some possible realignment, uh, of, of duties to see how that might be affected. Uh, police officer, I'm pleased to tell you that we have a candidate awaiting their physical and background check, uh, to replace the, uh, gent that went back to Winansky, Vermont. Uh, and we have three candidates, uh, in the wings, which all things going well, will fill in for Officer Tassi's resignation, uh, and then someone that we expect going to the state police. Uh, and, um, uh, if we can keep hold of all of these people and get everything through the hoops, as we hope, you would have candidates efficient through Labor Day of this year.
Excellent.
Which would be, uh, and, and it works out based upon their, uh, their plans also. One of the folks is, uh, at the Pittsburgh State College, um, degree program, and so they have their recruitment academy to go through. So, this, this could, I'm being very optimistic. This could really line up very nicely. Um, so the only new, new one that's kind of a, a little bit out there in the breeze for the moment, uh, is we do have the assistant mill site manager that has cropped up recently. Uh, I'm going to, given the hour, not restate all of the vacancies of the boards and commissions, but I do wanna really hit in on two of them. We have two vacancies, I'm, my understanding, on the finance committee. The town manager is scheduled to release to this board on February 11, uh, and to the finance committee on February 13, the budget. There is no better time to learn, uh, how government works, um, how it funds itself, and truthfully, no more critical time for this board to be in sure of its regular meeting corps. So, if you have an interest in, you know, how government works in this town and why it works, and why we pay for this, or how we get these numbers, or you just plain wanna make sure there's a budget ready for you when you get to the annual town meeting, it is a great time to be volunteering for this board. The other one that I wanna pump a little bit is the stormwater task force. I know it's only one vacancy, um, and I know that they still have work ahead of them. I don't know exactly where that's landing, but I can tell you, there's a $200,000 capital item for a catch basin cleaner this year. There will be a $300,000 street sweeper coming to you at some point in the near future. There are drainage collections to rebuild on a regular basis. Uh, this is a good, heavy bite out of your annual operating budget. Uh, and the work of this group has been not only to deal with that, to ponder about that, and to think about other ways to finance it. Um, doesn't require an override, but there are issues there, and this would be another place to think about global, uh, policy development and how that happens. So, with that, um, I will thank you for the opportunity to brief the board.
Any questions or comments?
I, I did have one that I, I think you kind of glossed over, and that's the police chief. So, I see a com-
Oh, oh, yes. My apologies. I'm sorry.
My only question is, it says here that you've been asked to find a way to include select board comments on the finalists, which we have never done, and I'm just wondering where that request is from, because again, the select board has never been involved with the selection or the interviewing or anything of a police chief. It's always been town manager and, uh, a committee that I think you've already outlined, who is it gonna be in that committee?
Yes, the, the screening committee, and we've given you a timeline, and this is one, if I leave, uh, your assistant town manager with nothing else, it's the idea of developing a countdown ahead of time, not waiting until you're knee-deep in the process.
Sure.
Uh, the screening, uh, committee, uh, consists of, uh, the school superintendent or their designee, whomever. Uh, the representative of the Council on Aging, uh, because of the involvement to a great degree with the, the senior set of the community. Uh, the fire chief, again, that coordination with EMS and all the fire services. Uh, it includes, uh, Mark Hadad, who is the town manager of the Town of Groton, who I've worked with and have some considerable respect for, to get sort of that, just general management oversight, uh, thought process. Uh, and then, a, um, subject matter expert, for lack of a better term, a police chief, uh, Michael Bennett, um, who's been chief out there, I think, now for about nine years, 10 years, uh, been through the FBI Academy, not, not the FBI Agent Academy, but that supplemental 13-week.
Leader training?
Yup, yup. Um, uh, very active, uh, on, um, state firearms standards boards and others. Uh, so I think that's a good round. Now, the question, um, has been, uh, before they're presented with a single name, would a member, would members of the select board have a chance to weigh in? Um, I personally, I think, have a bit more of a collaborative approach. I've tried to involve Council on Aging in hiring the senior center director and similar kinds of sewer commission in hiring the sewer business manager. Um, so I didn't think it unreasonable request. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how that would, would function. I've asked Julie to, to think about that. That could range from, um, we've used an assessment center, uh, in one community, and one member of the select board was delegated to sit in on the, um, assessment center, fly on the wall in the back, and just report to the select board what they thought of the process. Did it seem to make sense? Uh, did the report seem to make sense? Um, is what the town manager telling them, what he actually said in the meetings. Um, so there's a variety of different ways to do it. I, I don't know, um, whether or not to involve the public in some fashion either, uh, but I think I wanna flesh something out and leave that in the hands of your incoming, uh, town manager. I think that, at this point-
Who will be, who will be part of the team, obviously?
Oh, absolutely.
I just, I didn't hear that anywhere, so I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, ab- absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
I have a question. Um, you had mentioned that we mail water bills. I just wanna get some clarity. So, this board is also the water department, um, for the $23,000 to $30,000 in water bills, but the water district is separate. Now, is your comment related to that $23,000 to $30,000, or are you referring to the water district?
I'm referring to the $23,000 to $30,000, whatever it is, that this town-
Okay.
-bills directly. Uh, I think you have a line coming in from, what, Leominster or Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you rebuild that.
Yeah.
You rebuild that out. No, no, the water district is the wa, no, no, I, oh, no.
I think the answer is because we're the water.
Right, yes.
And, um, and then the other thing I noted, you know, I had, I had raised in the past, um, my thoughts about, uh, the HR, uh, procurement assistant town manager role. Um, and, you know, with, with it being 28 hours a week, and even though, you know, I, I have a high opinion of Julie, I think the, you know, the concern is that, you know, is, have we evaluated whether HR is a full-time function? And then, my observation was that we're, you know, very behind a lot of the capital stuff. As you know, you spend a significant amount of time working on them, and is 28 hours enough for both roles? Um, your predecessor, uh, you know, assured me that it was. Um, and, and I'd raised this several times, and I was asked to stop saying it publicly, but now that you're saying it publicly, I'm guessing that this has been rehashed, and you've come to a different opinion or assessment on this?
Well, we're going for a new motto, a new, new seal in one town, and I suggested we put in the, the town diner in the center, and the motto could be where we rehash the hash. Um, so, first, let me say-
So, that's a somewhat agreed?
Almost. I think maybe I somewhat agree, yes. Uh, first, I, I think I have been fairly on point in budget task force and other meetings, that you do not have sufficient resources to perform your administrative and financial functions.
Mm-hmm.
Full stop. Um, and so, is 28 hours a week enough? In my view, it is not, but I am viewing it through the lens and the manner in which I work, which quite frankly, involves a little more work, because I try to do these collaborative things, as we talked about, and I, a little more outreach and such. Um, so I think that position should be, I, I think all of your administrative support functions should be at least 36 hours a week. And if you had money, I'd push you to make them all 40 or 37 and a half or some higher number. Uh, secondly, with respect to the capital projects, I, I don't wanna oversimplify it, but I think it's real simple. The town manager sets aside one hour a week with the facilities director, and, you know, if you've got DPW or whoever else has projects, and a lovely little spreadsheet that Izzy will now be able to prepare once he recharts the accounts and says, "Where are we? Why isn't this done yet? What are the timelines?" And building out timelines for things to be done, similar to the countdown sheet that I gave you on the police chief screening. So, I don't wanna oversimplify it, but I think there was an approach of, "Well, the department head's got the money. They'll, they'll get, they'll get it done." I'm not quite as trusting. Lastly, you appropriated $50,000s of dollars to hire a grants writer. Uh, to, to pay a consultant to be a grants writer. Um, I can send you a, to repay, the quarterly report of a grants writer in another community where we hired someone around $60,000 a year. I, I think you need to do a better job at applying for grants and then managing them and tracking them. You don't, you don't keep contract books. You don't have contract registers. I don't have contract files that go from A to Z. You know, when was the RFP issued? When was the addendum issued? When was the contract issued? When was the change order issued? When were the payroll reports filed? Where are the payroll reports? When was the certificate of substantial completion? And again, you work with bigger projects, but whether it's a $25,000 contract or it's a two and a half, the basic step-
Paperwork's the same.
Paperwork's the same.
Yep.
Where's the warranty? You know, so what I've said to the team is, for the budget that I'm gonna leave on that desk on my way out the door, that $50,000, I believe, can be put to better use, and that's why I've tasked, uh, administration, finance, and I added, um, Chris Riley, because where I come from, grants is offered out in the development services, land use department. Um, I hit everything-
You did, and I appreciate, I appreciate that answer. So, you know, as, when I looked into this previously, most communities have multiple community, have multiple procurement specialists, um, who assist with these, or they have a procurement manager that's not necessarily the town manager.
I have lost you.
And, and, and a clearer process. So, in my other community, every department head is responsible for developing the scope of work, providing that, in this case, to the town administrator, and all I do is send it to my de-executive assistants. They smash it all together, and it's that one office, even for state bids, that one office controls the placement of all contracts above $10,000.
Yep.
It's just, it's much more, uh-
The amount of money-
Do you mind, or, I, I don't know the right phrase, but it's-
The amount of money that we're spending in a year, it just makes sense to have a, a separate person that's just focused on procurement, 'cause it's a lot of procurement. I mean, I think that when we think procurement optimization, we think capital, but it's everything. It's the paper, it's, it's, it's every single thing that we buy. Uh, it has, falls under some kind of procurement policy. And, and, in my role, my professional job, I mean, it's a paper trail, 'cause you have to demonstrate that you follow the law and that you, you know. So, anyway, I don't wanna focus-
I, I just wanna say, I, I don't wanna lose sight of, it is my firm belief that the first path, and I've always worked in, well, up until, up north and then Bucksboro, I've always worked in tax-capped communities. So, my first path has always had to be what realignment of staff makes sense to help improve things, and what changes in workflow can improve things. And only after we've exhausted those two, examining those two paths, have I supported putting additional people in place, or additional hours in place.
Thank you.
I have a few things for you too, Carter. First, I just wanted to say thank you for all the time that you've put in here. I think you've, you know, gotten us across a lot of, you know, projects and, and things that have, you made a lot of positive impact in my mind, so I appreciate your work.
A moment, you need to provide survey before they forget.
Yeah. Um, but just to address those things that we were just talking about, um, one of the things that I've seen a lot, and I think Renee's brought it up a couple of times, about an HR director mentioning, you know, Townsend didn't have one. Up until, what, five or six years ago, Lunenburg didn't have one. And ours is a part-time person who is filling two roles. I think that's, in my opinion, that's not sufficient.
So, three, really?
I think, yeah. I think that's a lot, especially for someone that's not full-time. I know money isn't endless, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I mean, I think we need a procurement specialist, the amount of money that we're talking about, and maybe that needs to be a part-time person. And then, we need, we need a dedicated HR person, in my opinion. I mean, we can't have one person that's an assistant town manager, and the procurement specialist, and an HR director. I mean, that's, in my, it's just, it's not enough. But, that's, that one particular person. Um, when you talk about the realignment of staff duties, I assume, you know, unions are involved in those discussions as well for the union positions?
Unions will be involved if and should any changes be triggered that need to be collected and bargained, and they've informed them.
Oh.
Oh, bloody hell.
Why do you keep turning it off?
Even on.
'Cause I keep thinking I'm done.
Sorry, I have more.
Uh, should, should there be any collective bargaining issues involved? We will, of course-
Yeah.
-talk with them.
I just-
Should it just be the need for a simple conversation? We will be having that conversation. Um, change does not always trigger required collective bargaining.
I just know with, with, you know, when we're talking about DPW and the staff down there, and they are understaffed, they have been for years. I mean, I think that's a, you've, you've identified, that's a, a problem administratively, town-wide. Just being aware of the long history of that position and the challenges there, especially with the split happened with facilities and DPW. I just hope that that, you know, is handled carefully, and I appreciate that you're bringing the insight and looking at it and how things can be improved, um, just knowing there is a lengthy history.
In that instance, the staff member that's involved is also a DPW, or a union steward.
Yes.
Um, and they were gonna, you know, gonna call a union rep. Well-
Right.
For what? Uh, we don't even know what we're talking about yet, you know?
Right.
Could, could we wait till we know what we're talking about?
And I think that goes unfortunately to the history of where things have been with, especially that particular staff member, and the relationship that we as a town are trying to rebuild. That reaction is because of the history of the relationship and the way things have been handled previously.
Well, under the direction of this board, plus my own unique personality, I, I think we've made a lot of progress on that in the last six months, and I'm, uh, most hopeful that the, uh, person you've selected will continue on a great deal of that, that path. Uh, the only thing that I just wanna be crystal clear on is that changes are not always, uh, the subject of collective bargaining.
Absolutely.
And even if they are, they're not always required to be approved by the union.
No, I understand, and I, I wasn't trying to be, I hope I didn't come across as, as confrontational or anything.
No, no, no.
I appreciate, I think that you're doing a great job in, in bringing that up and looking at how we can realign. I think that ultimately benefits our staff as well, because-
Well, I think, I think the fact that I have, you know, I, I went into one town where we were gonna make a change, and somebody said, "Oh, you're gonna go talk with the DPW director?" And I said, "Hell, no. I'm gonna go talk with the clerk, 'cause they're the one that do the work." So, just so you'll know, we had, um- So just so you'll know, we had, um, uh, we had Samantha, Julie, Andrew, New Sewer Business Manager, Bill, um, Chris Ruth, uh, involved in that conversation. This wasn't just, you know, me to person X. We try to tackle things as teams, uh, and involve people with the stakeholders in that discussion.
I like that approach. Thanks, Carter.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Carter. Minutes, warrants, and action items. We do have minutes for January ninth, twenty twenty-four, and December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Have we had an opportunity to review them?
Yes. I did. I had one thing on the seventeenth. I'm not sure we declared it Soodorety Day. I know we did that with Tom, but didn't we, didn't you declare it something else?
No, it was, yeah. It was not Soodorety Day.
I don't remember what you actually, what the declaration said.
It was Golden Age Day.
Yeah, Golden Age.
So that was just a one-
To celebrate her and the seniors of the town of Lunenburg, so good catch on that.
Which one is this?
Uh, the seventeenth, underneath the introduction.
December seventeenth?
Yeah. Because the only thing I caught on that same thing is that somehow there were five of us there, but only when we adjourned, and this is something totally petty, but when we adjourned, oh, it was unanimous, and it was four to zero to zero. So somehow we, somebody disappeared in the middle of this meeting.
Yeah, that should be five.
Other than that, I had nothing on either of the two.
I'm really appreciative that we have the two in there to review, and overall, I think the formatting has improved.
Significantly.
Yeah. All right. So is there a motion to approve the minutes with those two changes?
So moved as amended.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. What's next? Warrants. We do have a warrant here.
Um, before we get to warrants, under action items, I just want to come back to this. Um, we've been, um, you, we're, we've, I think we've made a request now several times to see the full engagement survey, um, so I will again make that request, and I think we're adding to it today and asking also to be able to see the, uh, draft questions, that way we can better revise this policy that were initially presented by the company to the town.
And if I may piggyback on that, I requested a report from the HR director when Carter started, so that's six months ago. So still have not seen that. I'd like to see that.
All right. Any other action items?
I have three reminders, too. Um, the cold building we brought up, I mean, I'm sure there's a building automation system in here, if we could get the heat to be on throughout the duration of our Tuesday meetings. I mean, I'm wearing my winter jacket, I have winter socks and two person pants on, and I'm freezing.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm being a baby, but it's really cold.
Yeah, I get it.
It's cold air blowing on us, too.
And we've brought that several times. The public records request, I still, I know that that's being worked on restively in town, but if we could get some sort of an updated report at our next meeting, in terms of what we're doing-
Carter could provide that for you.
Because of the sensitivity of, uh, some of the requesting parties, uh, and the potential legal issues around those, would the board object if I briefed you one-on-one?
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
I will, I will reach out over the next few days to get that done.
And lastly, the OneDrive, um, why can't I think of the word? Migration? Is that the right word?
Yeah. Migration.
Um, yeah, moving from the Google to OneDrive. I know Annie, um, had talked about November as an implementation of that. I didn't know if we can get that back on the agenda.
All right. Are we good to move on to warrants now? Any other action items? Movement accounts payable warrant, the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and eight cents.
I have blue.
I am going to recuse myself from signing off on AP for-
I have blue.
I have a black pen here. Michael Ray.
Thank you.
Not thinking about my nose being cold.
Sorry. I've been shivering all night, so I'm not the only one that is cold.
Yeah.
All right. Community reports.
I have, uh, one from the school committee. It's a, maybe a bit outdated, but it's from January eighth. They are meeting tomorrow night. Um, the big news, which I think everyone knows by now, is that Dr. Burnham announced that she will be retiring at the end of the school year. Um, Carol, Arshenbow, and Brian Leighton are on the superintendent search, um, committee, subcommittee. Um, they are still looking, um, for a director of facilities. They had a lot of discussion on the scope of the job. They also brought up, um, house doctor services. Um, they're looking into what that includes, and that may be a way to address higher level of the non-day-to-day parts of the, uh, director of facilities job. What is going on? Um, they also discussed athletic fee structure, and they will continue those discussions, as well as other fees at future meetings. Um, the transportation contract, surprisingly, they received one bid, uh, DBUS. So they, a- at that meeting, they were, it's probably, I assume, worked out by now, um, working on spreading out the impact of the increase over the span of the contract, which was three years with an option for two, two more years. Discussion on revolving funds that are seeing less revenue, uh, in recent years, specifically the school choice, uh, fund. Some project updates as part of the facilities and grounds report. The fire alarm upgrade at Turkey Hill, the contract was signed, award of bid posted. Project is scheduled to be completed by August fifteenth. The doors at Turkey Hill, that project came in much higher than expected, so there's not enough, um, money to do all the doors, so they're looking at phases. There was also an MSBA webinar for superintendents on accelerated repair projects. I think that was scheduled for today, so they were waiting for that webinar to see if, um, maybe they wanted to take that route, if they could, for the, um, for at least some of the door projects. The safety film at Middle High School is scheduled to be completed that night, the eighth, so that should be done. The utility pickup truck with plow is being built now, with, uh, delivery expected in mid to late spring. This was a long meeting. Uh, the nine-one-one upgrades, they are on track to be completed today, uh, the twenty-first. There was, um, discussion on the proposed, um, latest plan from the architect, from the municipal building design, on the school department space in the Ritter. Uh, there's a lot of discussion and feedback on those plans, and there was also a lot of discussion about the lag in funds showing up in munis. At one time, it was three-month lag for the funds to show, now it's about seven weeks. And there was a comment that the chapter seventy, seventy money that we voted on at the fall town meeting still hadn't, as of January eighth, hadn't appeared in the salary reserve account. So that was, um, that delay in, in funds showing up makes it a challenge when it's, comes to, you know, budgeting and planning. And, like I said, they meet tomorrow night again.
Capital planning, as Carter said, uh, that they're trying to schedule a meeting for next Wednesday. I don't know if, how many responses the chair has gotten, but that is scheduled for then. Uh, generally, they're at the Ritter Building tomorrow, not tomorrow, uh, the board, yeah, tomorrow, Board of Assessors meet, and one of the things they're going to be doing, now that the governor has signed the senior tax write-off legislative, special legislation, that they're going to, formulating a team, I think Lou and I and the, and one of the members of the Board of Assessors and the lead assessor, or will form a team about making an implementation plan about how to implement that. So that, I think, will happen in the next, uh, that'll, the formation of the team will happen tomorrow, and I think that our charge is to do it in six weeks or so. That's it.
Economic Development Committee is supposed to be meeting on Thursday. They haven't met in quite a while. And then same thing with the Master Plans Steering Committee, have not met since November. I know, I think I said this quite a few weeks ago, but the planning board, Chair of the Planning Board was talking about bringing it to their board, but, you know, a potential remake of the, of the committee. Um, I think I need to reach out to him to see if, you know, where we're at, if they've had any discussions. I have not watched their meeting, so I'm not sure if there's been any discussion, um, about that, but that needs to, that needs to happen, so they have not met yet either.
Um, I have, um, well, I have a comment related to the school committee report. So I think, um, I, 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 I think this would be a really good opportunity for the, um, school department, uh, to meet with the town manager, to discuss, um, that facility role that they're continuing to struggle to hire. Uh, I think that there's opportunity for synergy, um, with Chris Ruth's role to provide some of those higher-level functions. As I read their role as a property professional, um, they would, they would be, it would be beneficial for them to craft that job with property professionals. The role that they've created, in my opinion, is a bit expansive for the salary range, um, and some of that higher-level, um, support that Chris Ruth already provides to the town. I do think it would be beneficial to our entire community if we follow the lead of, of towns such as Air, um, you know, cities like Gardner, places that have decent facilities in which they combine, uh, as one entity, kind of that, that large facility role, and then within that, they create like the school facility superintendent, you know, the town superintendent. So that way you get that big picture, um, thought as it goes into, um, all facilities, not just one side. Um, but the role that they've, that they're posting for, uh, I, 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 again, I, I think they benefit from some revisions there. It's going to be hard to hire, uh, how they've described that role, uh, given the salary range. Uh, the municipal building design committee meets, uh, tomorrow, uh, with the arch, uh, with the architectural team. Uh, we're on track to, uh, have our price estimate, um, by, if not by the end of this week, for sure, by the time that we have the presentation, uh, to the select board. Uh, there's been a lot of, especially as of late, now that we have some, uh, drawings and renderings, uh, there's been some good public participation, uh, in these meetings, a lot of, um, community feedback, you know? I will advise, you know, it's a process, um, and, you know, I, I think, you know, you ask a hundred people what they want to see, you get a hundred different opinions, maybe you might get ninety-five different opinions. Um, but it's, it's a lot of different viewpoints, and the challenge is always, um, taking account for all of those different views, all those, those different wants, um, and pulling together a, a, a product, a solution that addresses as many needs as possible. Um, so the committee's meeting tomorrow, five-thirty, uh, will be another, uh, lengthy, uh, meeting due to the presentations. I encourage anyone from the public to attend. Uh, it is one of the few meetings that we have in town where members of the public can participate, generally at almost any time. Um, I know that at our last meeting, uh, when we get to those points where we have to make decisions or give guidance, that, that we do limit when we have a lot of community engagement. We do limit some of it, just so that way we can be clear to the vendors on what the next steps are, but we do encourage public participation, uh, throughout the meeting. And again, tomorrow via Zoom, uh, five-thirty PM. Library trustees, um, I don't have an update for their meeting, um, but I will, um, report that, take some notes and get that out for, uh, our next meeting.
All right, and I do not have a committee report tonight. Public comment, is there any public comment from the interim town manager?
None.
Is there any public comment from the public? All right, seeing none. Any public comment from the board? I do have one, because I've been informed that for whatever reason, my announcement at the beginning of the meeting was cut off, so I'm going to make it again. The Board of Assessors is sponsoring a senior conference on February third at the Senior Center from one PM to three PM as part of their outreach efforts. As you might be aware, this past year has seen a significant number of exemption changes and expansion and benefits available to our citizens. And as the numbers clearly indicate, we have an unprecedented opportunity to help a great number of the seniors. Couple of facts, more than nine million Americans likely qualify for property tax relief, but only eight percent apply for it. Eight-point-three percent of all Lunenburg residents live below the poverty line. Lunenburg has a senior population of two thousand and ten people. A total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one seniors of Lunenburg live below the poverty line. But the benefits extend far beyond the poverty line. Next week, the Board of Assessors will provide the select board of a brief outline of the conference on February third. If you have any friends who are over sixty-five, urge them to watch, and if it's not for them, at least tell a friend, thank you, uh, from the Board of Assessors. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. It is nine-fifty-two PM, the select board is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning into our workshop tonight, and we will maybe see you again next week, probably not, uh, but we will see you in February.